Meeting of March 8, 2023. I am Tom Callahan, the chair. I'll just do quick introductions before the roll call. We have our vice chair, Amy Glassmeyer, and happy birthday to Amy today. Chris Flex, Clark Brewer, Geirdra Hobson. Our associate member Kevin Hine is on Zoom. And then we have Lauren Lind, who is our interim contract town planner at the moment. She has left us for Green if Pastures, but is helping us until we find a new town planner. And then Cassandra Thayer is our assistant town planner. And then also with us tonight is the Honorable Judith Cutler from KP Law Firm. She is the former chief justice of the Land Court, and she has been helping us with the writing of the bylaw. So we'll start by calling the meeting order and having a roll call vote for tenants, alphabetical.
Clark Brewer here.
Tom Callahan's here.
Amy Glassmeyer here.
Geirdra Hobson here.
Chris Flex here.
Kevin, are you out there? He's out there, right?
Yes, I keep promoting him, but he's not.
Okay, that's fine. All right, so the order of business tonight is that, well, let me say, we're here to conduct a hearing under Mass. General Law Chapter 40A, Section 5. It is a required public hearing that the planning board must conduct for any zoning bylaw changes. We have done this many times before, so it is a formal hearing. And at the end of the hearing process, whether we finish it tonight or continue it to our next meeting, the planning board will make recommendations, yea or nay, on the zoning articles. Tonight, Judge Cutler is going to present the articles to the board and to the public. We will then, when she's finished with her presentation, and I'd ask her to be able to go through the whole thing at once, and then we will take questions and comments from the audience. We will alternate between live and Zoom, and then the board will have questions, comments, and deliberations. And again, the hope is we come to our recommendations at the end. We may not. If we do not, we will continue that to our next hearing, which is next night, March 22nd. So we have no other business tonight, so this will be it. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Judge Cutler.
Okay.
Oops, sorry.
This is a public hearing after the public hearing notice.
Oh, do you mind?
I don't. For all time sake. This is what we keep you here for. This is a long one, so.
Okay.
Notice of public hearing, class of planning board pursuant to Section 5 of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, the planning board beholden hybrid public hearing at Willcut Commons, 91 Slaughter Street, Cross at Massachusetts, and on the Zoom platform, webinar ID 8478510071, password 311056, on Wednesday, March 8, 2023, at 6:30 p.m. On the following proposals to amend the class of zoning bylaws, the following zoning articles proposed for annual town meeting may not be numbered exactly as they will ultimately appear on the official class of annual town meeting warrant commencing on May 1, 2023. Z1, amend Article 1, authority, purpose, and intent, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws to reorganize and update the provisions of Article 1. Z2, amend Article 2, definitions, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws to update existing and add new definitions of Article 2. Z3, amend Article 3, establishment of zoning districts, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws to reorganize and update the provisions of Article 3. Z4, amend Article 6, sign regulations, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws to reorganize and update the provisions of Article 6. Z5, amend Article 8, nonconforming uses, structures, and lots, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws to reorganize and update the existing provisions of Article 8. Z6, amend Article 12, administration and enforcement, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws to reorganize and update the existing provisions of Article 12. Z7, repeal Article 13, administration, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws to repeal Article 13 in its entirety. The full text and maps is applicable. The proposed zoning amendments are available for viewing at the Town Clerk's Office, Cross at Town Hall, 41 Highland Avenue, Cross at Massachusetts, 02025, during regular business hours, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Tuesday, 8:30 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Friday, 8:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Electronic copies of proposals can be found on the Town or Class of website. I'm not going to read the whole link there to class@ma.org at the zoning bylaw committee website. Any person interested or wishing to be heard of the proposed amendments should attend the virtual meeting at the time designated and sign Thomas J. Callahan, Chair, Planning Board.
Thank you, hon. Don't go out with a dandy. Yeah, I want to emphasize for everybody who's listening that everything is on the zoning bylaw committee's website, distinct from the zoning board of appeals. Not only are the texts of the actual articles, we have a summary that has been prepared by Judge Cutler. We have a slide presentation that we presented at a public forum last week that has side-by-side comparisons of each of the articles with the new language versus the old language. So I urge everybody to take a look at that website for the materials. So again, Judge Cutler, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Tom. Well, before I start, I just want to give a little general background to why we're here and what the process is that we have been going through for the last several months and what we expect to be going through for the next couple of months, at least. As you may know, or people may have heard, the selectmen have appointed a zoning bylaw committee to advise it as to appropriate amendments for updating the current zoning bylaw. It hasn't been updated actually significantly since about 1986, and it's really high time. The general basic bylaw is in fairly decent format, but what has happened over time is that there have been many, many amendments coming in and out at various times by various people, and they're not always, they don't always wind up in the exact correct location in the bylaw, leads to some confusion, there are some redundancies and so forth. So the selectmen asked KP Law to undergo a zoning bylaw diagnostic process whereby we looked, we went through every line of the zoning bylaw last summer and early fall to sort of identify changes that would help make the bylaw, first of all, more user-friendly, second of all, reduce interpretation and enforcement issues, ensure conformance with current state and federal law, and improve the bylaw organization and formatting to serve as a foundation for future amendments so people would logically know where to insert new amendments. As part of the diagnostic, we made certain recommendations primarily aimed at improving the clarity and internal consistency of the language of the bylaw, eliminating, to eliminate outdated or duplicative provisions in the bylaw, eliminate standard application procedures that could be adopted by the boards as regulation instead of putting them in the bylaw, improve the overall organizational formatting of the bylaw, try and avoid conflicts and potential conflicts with governing law of the state and federal government, eliminate unnecessary repetition of statutory procedures, and basically improve the whole format and presentation of the bylaw and make it more, make the basic organizational structure better. We made some recommendations about the order of articles, which is not the subject of tonight, may or may not occur. We made some presentations, some recommendations about how to format and present, for example, the tables of uses and dimensional regulations and so forth, and recommended that those be looked at for total reorganization at this point. They're a little, they're quite confusing for the everyday person to use. And then we did a section-by-section analysis of, or an article-by-artikel analysis of each of the zoning bylaw articles to identify certain housekeeping changes that we thought would make the bylaw better and easier to read, updating it being a critical first step. Amendments that we are focusing on tonight are really to the underpinnings of the bylaw, if you will, the sections that set up the background for the town's authority to adopt zoning and its purposes, and how it works in terms of the setting up the zoning districts and where they're located on the map, the boundary lines, detailing certain things about nonconforming uses and structures, and the general administration and enforcement of the bylaw, and what the procedures are, who's responsible for each, for what role in the in the organization. And those are sort of very generalized zoning requirements that are in just about every zoning bylaw, you know, in the community and throughout the country for that matter. But we thought getting that underpinning in order and straightened out would be a good first step, and I think an easy introduction to the process for the town to better understand what it is we're trying to, what result we're trying to obtain. Later on, these will serve as the foundation for greater developments that are going to occur with respect to proposals for the Article 4 use regulations, the Article 5 dimensional regulations, thus the parking regulations. dimensional regulations, thus the parking regulations, and some of the more significant substantive requirements of the bylaw. Nothing we talk about tonight, I think, should really change anybody's lives. It's probably more for people who just do this for a living and, you know, get deep into the woods and want to make sure that everybody is on the same page when we're interpreting and reading this bylaw. So in that vein, the zoning bylaw committee chaired by the Chairman of the Planning Board, Tom Callahan, and with other Planning Board members assistants, Clark Brewer, and with Select Board Chair, Jack Creighton, and two Citizen-at-Large members, Cassie Malatesta and David Farag, and I think Cassie is also in the Master Plan Implementation Committee. So they have been involved in going through some of the proposals as we draft something for this, this season's town meeting. So just giving that as the background, you know, so you know where we're heading, I'm going to go through a summary of the proposed zoning bylaw amendments. So the first one is an article that will address Article 1 of the zoning bylaw and Article 13 of the zoning bylaw. And as I go through, I'm going to try very hard to distinguish, when I say "bylaw" article, I'm going to use the word "bylaw" or "zoning bylaw" in front of the word "article," and if it's the article on the warrant, I'm going to say "warrant" article. It's a, it's a kind of confusing thing that people can get mixed up with. So the zoning bylaw article, Articles 1 and 13, really relate to the authority and purposes and validity of the zoning bylaw. And what we are proposing are primarily housekeeping changes. They're editorial changes to clarify some of the existing language, to eliminate redundancies and unnecessary language. And as a result, we can really combine Article 1 and Article 13 and eliminate Article 13, which is only two paragraphs in any event entirely, just to clean it up. That's just housekeeping, and it really doesn't affect anybody, it just helps for interpretation of the bylaw. There's one, if you call it a major change, I think it's a major change, and that is adding some purposes for the zoning bylaw. There are several purposes listed now, and we would add four new purposes. To conserve natural resources and prevent pollution of environment, to encourage diverse housing opportunities, to encourage the most appropriate use of land in accordance with the objectives and recommendations of the town's master plan. And those are pretty generally acceptable and accepted purposes for zoning, and it helps, believe it or not, to have those purposes listed because when there is an interpretation issue at stake, oftentimes a court will look at those purposes in trying to figure out what the town's intent is in a particular requirement. So that, that's all that, that's all that we're doing in that one article. It's very short, one warrant article. We'll take care of those two bylaw articles, 1 and 13. The next thing we're going to, and I'm going to skip over Article 2 for now because that has a more significant change that I want to discuss at the end. Zoning bylaw Article 3 explains what the several districts of the town are, both the base, what we call the base zoning districts, that is, the residential districts, the industrial, light industrial districts, the various business districts, and also sets out the overlay districts, your floodplain and watershed protection districts, your solar energy overlay district and so forth. So that's just really updating the list, clarifying it, and we're going to update the reference to the various zoning district maps. Chapter 40A, the State Zoning Act, requires that all districts be shown on a map, that the boundaries of the districts be shown on a map, and right now, a couple of the districts weren't on the actual printed map that we have, so we want to make sure that we reference the maps that were addressed and adopted at town meeting. Ultimately, our goal is to incorporate those onto the main zoning map so that the only thing that won't show up, and boundary districts that won't show up on the main zoning map will be the floodplain because that's not really a physical boundary line that you, that you look at, it's really based upon the elevations of the land. The article, zoning bylaw Article 3 also has rules about how to interpret those boundaries that you see on the map. And we're really not changing those rules, we're just clarifying them. The one alteration we're making to the current rules relates to how use regulations from one district can be extended into a second district where the zoning district boundary divides the lot. So if somebody owns a lot that is partially in Residence C and partially in Residence B, the current bylaw allows the use regulations, which really wouldn't work with Residence C and B because they're the same uses that are virtually allowed, but let's, let's change the, let's change the example, let's say it's a Residence C adjoining a, one of the business districts, and you have part of your lot is within the business district, part of your lot is in the residential district. Under the current bylaw, you're allowed to extend that use from one, that one portion of the lot, so let's say the business portion of the lot, up to 30 feet into your residentially-zoned portion of the lot, up to 200 feet if you get a special permit from the zoning board of appeals. We're not changing that. The only thing we're changing there is to clarify that this doesn't include a situation where an overlay district, such as the floodplain overlay district, divides your lot, where a portion is in the floodplain and a portion is not. You, you can't make that extension in those situations. And then the other thing we're doing is loosening it up just a little bit. Right now, if you are transferring from one portion of, a use from, that's allowed on one portion of your lot up to 30 feet into the other portion of the lot, all of your, all of the lot area, lot width, and lot depth requirements have to be met on the portion from which you're transferring, if that makes sense. You can't use the entire lot to meet those basic requirements. We're, we've taken that out only because area and depth and width really are passive open area portions of the lot, which really don't, so it doesn't really change anything, and it seemed kind of unfair not to be allowed to use a portion of your remaining land to satisfy a lot width or a lot depth requirement. So that's been taken out, that loosens it up just a bit. But other than that, there's really no change. So that's, that's your Article 3 zoning districts. No new districts, no new boundaries, all the same. The next thing we tackled was the sign bylaw, and the sign bylaw needed a lot of cleanup, partly because it looks to me like it was taking, it was originally only a general bylaw of the town and got incorporated into the zoning bylaw as zoning regulations at some point. And when it was moved over, some, some vestiges of being a, a general bylaw sort of came with it. So we kind of cleaned that up, and it becomes really enforceable in the same manner as any other part of the zoning bylaw is enforceable. There were only three real changes that were made to the existing sign regulations. They're cleaned up, the language is cleaned up, we've tried to make it more cohesive and organize it better. But we focused on political signs in order to make the sign bylaw more consistent with recent case law interpreting, how, how a town or other municipality may regulate signs that are, that contain messages that are protected by the First Amendment. And you already have a pretty good, you know, handle on it, and you're pretty good about allowing political signs, and your definition of political signs is, is fairly broad. But I wanted to expand the definition of political signs so that encompassed other areas of free speech, ideological, theological, you know, just thoughts at random, anything that one is able to say without government interference, other than time and manner. So you're, you pretty much allow political signs all over town, there's, there's no issue, the same size as any regular sign. If you're allowed to have a business sign, you could have a political sign of the same You don't necessarily differentiate between temporary and permanent signs. So what we've done here is we've said, okay, a political sign is basically, if it's a permanent structure, is, is treated the same as any other permanent sign in town, same size requirements, same setback requirements. And if you want to put on your sign, you know, "Save the whales," that's your privilege. Nobody's going to tell you, you can't have that sign on your property, but you're not going to be able to have a "save the whale" sign and Joe's, you know, gas station together. If, if the, if the sign bylaw only allows you to have one sign, you have one sign of that nature. So, but it's your choice what you want to put on it. The second thing that's done is we, we set aside a separate category for temporary political signs, and these are signs that advertise the candidacy for office, advertise some issue that may come before either town meeting or one of the boards for a vote, and, and you want to say, you know, "vote on," you know, Article 6, "vote yes," whatever. Those are sort of temporary signs, they're not permanently put in place. So those have a 60-day time limit, which we think is reasonable, given that other temporary signs can have 30 days plus an additional 30. And this prevents, since there's no limit on the number or size of these signs, we figured, you know, this, this gives plenty, people plenty of opportunity without overloading the town with, with signage for long periods of time. That should, that should be fine now, and I, we're hoping that that works. So the third thing that we did was we expressly exempt governmental signs from having to comply with the sign bylaw. These are signs, state and federal signs would already be exempt. This exempts signs on town land and structures from having to comply with all the various requirements of the sign bylaw. It's very common to, to do this, particularly when it's a governmental function, you want to be able to have the correct signage without, without too much difficulty. And the third thing that this does is imposes for the first time a maximum height on freestanding signs. Right now, there is no maximum height, and so we wanted to make sure that they were no higher than 20 feet in the business or commercial districts and no higher than 10 feet in residential districts. So that's the sum and total of the sign bylaw changes. Again, I don't think it should negatively affect anybody's property uses. The third zoning bylaw article we tackled was Article 8, which deals with nonconforming uses and structures, and lots. This article is going to be a little more complex, the warrant article, because it's going to be presented under two motions. And the first motion is going to cover basically the housekeeping consistency, language changes, which really don't alter the present rules and how they're applied. The second portion of the article will relate only to this, what's so-called separate lot exemption, okay? And we'll, we'll, we'll get to those individuals. The editorial changes that we've made to Article 8, warrant article, to zoning bylaw Article 8, involve really the same kinds of tweaking of the language, trying to make it more consistent, more easily digestible and understood. So in order to do that and to consolidate it a little bit more, we did remove several paragraphs that appear there now, which are basically repeats of state law on how zoning freezes apply to lots shown on a subdivision plan. It doesn't mean that those freezes aren't in effect, it just means we don't have to repeat it in the zoning bylaw. It stands as it is, and it's only applicable in those limited situations. So we didn't feel it was necessary to repeat it. It also clarifies that the single lot exemption provisions apply to lots for single-family use within the residential districts. It doesn't right now say that this is only in the residential districts. It's really ambiguous, and the conclusion of the committee was that the history of this particular lot exemption commencing in 1955, where it first appeared, was that it was for residentially-used lots, for single-family residence use. If that's something, and I'd like to hear from people today if they have more history about this and know, know something more about the background of why it was changed ultimately, I think we should hear about it. In fact, two, one of two things can happen. This can be a change that can take effect so that it's clear that this doesn't apply to, that these protections don't apply to non-residential properties. They are not protected under state law, nobody has to protect them, and we're talking about vacant lots here, whereas the residential uses are protected under, residential use lots are protected. The third thing that we did was we incorporate the definition of abandonment, which currently appears in Article 2, the definition section. We took it out of there and put it into Article, zoning Article 8, to clarify what abandonment is. So again, Article 8 refers to nonconforming uses, structures, and lots. Abandonment means that if you don't use it, or you intentionally abandon your nonconformity, it's, it's gone, and the next thing you have to do is comply with the zoning bylaw. So we wanted to get that clarified in there and stuck it into, in with the rest of the provisions for nonconforming uses, structures, and lots. Now I want to get back to this single lot exemption, and I don't know how many people watched the forum the other night. I think Tom did an excellent job presenting what the single lot exemptions are, and if you go on the website, you will see that presentation and the PowerPoint that he did is out there for you to read.
Do you want it up?
Well, if we may need it with questions later, yeah. But to simplify it, if I can, under state law, if one owns a lot for single or two-family residential use, at the time that the zoning bylaw is adopted or amended, that requires you to increase your area or frontage, lot width, depth, you don't have to comply with that increase if you own a lot of record, okay? That's state law, and there are, there are, you know, exceptions and special interpretations and so on that excuse it in one way or another, but basically, if you never had zoning at all, and zoning comes in, and you own a lot for single or two-family, that can be used for single or two-family residential use, as long as it has 5,000 square feet of area and 50 feet of frontage, nobody can take that away from you, the right to build a single-family house on that lot, okay? Basically there forever, as long as it's vacant. Once it's vacant, then you have a nonconforming structure, and that falls under a whole different part of the bylaw. The problem comes in if you own two of those lots or four of those lots, all bunched together, all adjoining each other, in which case, there's a rule that is called the merger rule, and that is, you must And that is, you must use all the land that you have to meet the zoning as much as you possibly can. So that if you own two of those 5,000-square-foot, 50-foot lots, you own them together, they're of record, the town comes in and adopts zoning, now you're required to have 20,000 square feet, where you only have the 10. You have to use all 10 for the one house that you're going to build on your land. You can't have the two lots, because they've merged. There is other exceptions. If you have three or more, and you build on them or sell them out within a period of time, and they're 7,000, they have 7,500 square feet and 75 feet of frontage, that's another group, very limited, it's only a five-year protection. But the forever protection is called the single lot exception. In Cohasset, in 1955, you had that single lot exception. And it specifically said it applied only to lots that were of record as of July 1st, 1955. By law was adopted in 1955. Nothing about going forward. At some point, I think it was in 1978, the town adopted a whole new by law, as it had to at that point, as every city in town had to, to comply with the new zoning act that was enacted in 1976 by the legislature. And when it adopted a new zoning by law, it took away the deadline, number one, so that lots, it allowed lots of record in addition to the ones that are protected by state law that I've already discussed. It gave a little special protection if the lot was of record when the zoning by law changed that makes it nonconforming. And the lot had at least a larger minimum, I think it was 10,000 in the...
Different in the three districts.
Yeah, it's different in the three districts, but it's basically, you don't have, it's more than the 5,000 in each of the districts. It's like 10,000 and 15,000, it's 16,000. And then you get those special protections, as if you had the 50-foot frontage, 5,000-square-foot lot that's protected under state law. But it's a little, it's a little looser if you're in common ownership. Okay? So it gave more protections to people who owned nonconforming lots that are commonly owned. You can continue to use those as separate lots without merging them, as long as they meet the minimum lot area requirements that you have in the by law. The change that is being proposed is simply to put in a new date by which one has to have a lot recorded in order to take advantage of that extra special protection for contiguous lots of record. Okay? So if today you own contiguous lots of record that meet the requirements of that exception, nothing is going to change. That continues on. All the way, if you have any lot of record up until June 30th of 2023, which is the date that's being proposed as the cutoff date, those lots will have the protection that is existing today for commonly held lots. Okay? After that date, if you were to create new lots, you would go back to relying upon state law. So increases in area and frontage would not affect you as long as you had your minimum, as long as you met the requirements, current requirements when you created the lot, put it on record after June 30th, 2023. And you have at least 50 feet of frontage on a street, and you have at least 5,000. Well, it's easy to have the 5,000, because in every district, if you were to create a new lot, you'd have to have a minimum of lot area that's much larger than that. So going forward, all this does is say, we're not going to give you special protections if you have adjoining nonconforming lots or lots that are made nonconforming by future zoning amendments. So I'm hoping that you'll be able to ask questions after we're done, because this is, you know, this is a complex issue, and not everybody understands it fully. Some people fully understand it because they've been, they've been watching it. That's it. But basically, the Chapter 48 freeze protections continue in effect. If the town were to, in the future, increase area, frontage, lot width, setback requirements for lots, those freeze protections for existing nonconforming lots of record continue. The only change is whether or not it's more generous, as it is now, for lots that are held in common ownership, so that they don't have to merge. Okay? So that's that. Article 12. We're almost, we're almost there. Do you want to take a break and ask questions about the others before we go on to 12 and two?
All right, well, all right. We'll take some questions from the public, since there was one here about Article eight. I'm assuming that with respect to the earlier articles, we don't have any questions. Justin, I don't know if anybody's got a hand up out there.
I don't see any hands up in this town.
All right. For people who are going to ask, now I know, I have one over here too. But for people who are going to speak tonight, please give your name, your address. If you're not a resident, tell us that. If you have some affiliation as a professional, for somebody who is a property owner, like attorney or engineer, please disclose that as well. So maybe we'll start with you in the front, because you had a question when the Article eight presentation was... Go ahead. No, you don't? Oh, okay. All right. Mr. Bueller.
Steve Bueller, 861 Main Street, Norwell. Not a resident, but a property owner in Cohasset, and grew up in Cohasset. Spent most of my life here. And this is just a clarification for me that's watching on TV. You had mentioned that the allowing the floating zone, you had mentioned it was 30 feet in the Cohasset by law, and you could go up to 200 by special permit. Just for clarification, you can go 50 feet as a matter of right and 200 feet by special permit.
Did I misstate that?
And if somebody's watching, if you thought it was 30 instead of 50.
Did I misstate that? 50. I apologize. Yes, you're absolutely right. My eyesight. I should put on my reading glasses here. And that's not changing. That should not change. Right. Okay. Yes. Thank you so much.
And on the article on the 5,000 and 5,000 and 50-foot, we call it pretty much the protection, in 48, Section 6, it specifically refers to, let me get this, any increase in area, frontage, width, yard or depth requirements of a zoning ordinance or a by law shall not apply to a lot for single and two-family residential use.
Correct.
You don't think it says anything about whether it's in a business district or not?
No, it doesn't. But, but in the original by law, that only applied to residential, to Residence A and Residence B. Unclear, and that's what this hearing is about, part of what this hearing is about, why it suddenly applied to any lot in town, all right? For a single family. There are very few districts in which a single-family house could be built by right on a vacant lot.
Okay. But under state law, 48, Section 6...
There's no, there's no, there's nothing in 48, Section 6 that restricts it to a particular zoning district. It's only a lot for single or two-family use. That does not mean if one has a lot in a business zone district that you could not build a single-family house on under the current use regulations, that you would be able to use it for single or two-family use. The idea is if you own a lot, which at the time the zoning comes in, you were able to use for single or two-family use, and then zoning comes in and changes the requirements, those increased requirements cannot be applied so that you can't put your single or two-family use on there.
Okay. So in layman's terms, you can build on a 5,000-square-foot, 50-foot frontage lot in a business district?
In a district in which single-family use is allowed or two-family use is allowed. There's no special protection for non, non-commercial or commercial property. There's no, there's no built-in protection. This is for lots for single or two-family use. I suppose, and I don't know, because I haven't done the research, there may be districts here that have some lot that was there and created before 1955, and they could have built a single-family house on it, and they meet the 5,000-square-foot, 50-foot protections, I suppose, and I'm not going to say for sure, we want to do a little research on that. It's potential that that could happen. Yes.
I'm going to hold the planning board. Is there anybody else?
Any questions?
No questions.
Okay. All right. So we'll move on to Article, zoning Article 12.
Okay. So again, zoning Article 12 is primarily cleanup. It's primarily reorganization. We're not going to do anything, again, drastic in Article 12, except for probably one thing, two things, and I don't think it's drastic. The fine for zoning violations is increased from $100 a day per violation to 300. This is what state law allows. This is up to date with what just about every community uses.
And our conservation by law has it for conservation violations is $300 a day.
Right. The other major change, if you will, that has occurred is in the site plan review requirements and process. So right now, there is a site plan review process that is applicable to certain nonchanges, to certain nonconforming uses and structures, and to light industrial and business district properties when new buildings, certain new construction is proposed. This new site plan requirement is quite, quite different. It's enlarged a little bit in terms of its scope. And what it would do would require site plan review by the planning board for any, any new construction where a new building is proposed, a, what is called a substantial alteration of a building is proposed, a change, if a change in use is proposed that would result in additional parking requirements under the zoning by law, or a substantial alteration of parking or circulation of the lot. This is an administrative site plan review process by the planning board. It is not a special permit. And the new proposal would set limits, time limits, on how much time the planning board had to process and review and decide on a site plan. It also sets parameters. These are very physical parameters. These are, do you meet the parking requirements? How is your, how is your access and circulation safe and adequate? Do you have proper buffer or fencing or screening, if that's applicable? Do you have place to store your snow? Do you have a place for your trash refuse to go? Is your drainage going to be all right? This is not a design review. So while someone may need to have some basic site plan showing where their building is going to be and some basics about the size and the use of the building, this is not, this is not a discretionary review as to I like it or I don't like it. It's do you meet the basic functional needs for the site development, for the use that you're proposing, and otherwise meet all the requirements of the zoning by law, whether that's setback requirements or height requirements or what have you. There are definitions so that people won't get confused about what a substantial alteration is. And so the new by law would specifically describe what that is. Substantial alteration is defined as a building, is a substantial alteration of a building or group of buildings, is one that results in an increase of 500 square feet or more of area or 10% of existing gross floor area, whichever amount is more. A substantial alteration of the parking and loading areas and vehicular access is a change in the layout or location of parking, loading or access driveways, or an increase of 500 square feet or more of the area of the lot devoted to parking, loading or vehicular circulation. So re-striping or repaving would not fall under that. There's a 75 days, I mentioned the planning board is limited in its time review to 75 days to complete the site review and issue a decision. Otherwise, the plan is deemed approved as submitted. The building inspector may not issue a building permit for a property where site plan review is required unless there has been a site plan review and an approval, and has to make sure that the conditions of approval are followed. The site plans under this provision may only be disapproved in three circumstances. One, the application is incomplete, and the planning board will be required to adopt application regulations for what is required, what is the plan has to consist of, what materials have to be submitted and support. The second possibility for disapproval would be the proposal does not comply with the zoning by law requirements. Or three, there are no reasonable conditions that can be devised to reduce significantly detrimental health and safety impacts from the proposed site development. So if there's flooding that just can't be managed because of the soils on the property, something like that, where there just is no reasonable condition. Very often, there are reasonable conditions. Something can be shrunk or moved on the site. If there's possible noise or pollution impacts on abutting properties, they can be addressed through screening perhaps, or other conditions on the operations on the site. So it's very limited, but I think necessary, and I think in this day and age, this is very consistent with what most communities do with commercial and multifamily developments. That's it for Article 12.
Is it short question?
Again, Steve Bueller, are those two definitions, substantial alteration and substantial alteration of parking, going to be put into Article two, not Article 12?
No, Article 12. It's not a definition, it's an explanation, if you will, but it's what it means for that purpose only. It doesn't relate to any other part of the by law present. Okay? It applies to when site plan review is applicable. So it's unnecessary to put it in as a definition that applies throughout the by law. I think it would be confusing. It's not just a definition of substantial alteration. It's substantial alteration of a building or buildings means this. So you can argue about it. The committee can argue about it. We can, you know...
And as we go on with the second step in the by law in the fall, we may find that the term is being used in other contexts, and then we would move it for general application. But right now, that terminology is only being proposed for being applicable to site plan.
Right. Correct.
Yes, one of our objectives is to move a lot of definitions that are all over the by law. No, I know that, I know that. But we've discussed that, and there's certain places, like abandonment in Article eight, where it's really just applicable to the one situation and addressed in one particular article, and we're just leaving it there. If we find we need to make it a more general application, we will do that in the fall.
And that's perfectly lead into Article two, zoning by law Article two, which is the definition section.
It would be more of a trigger mechanism.
It's a trigger mechanism.
It would indicate that this would need to go to this step, review.
Exactly. Exactly. Yes. Yes.
And for everybody, that's John Hallen, our building inspector in the zoning enforcement office. All right. Is everybody good moving forward? Does anybody need a break? All right, we'll forge ahead.
Okay. Zoning by law Article two contains the majority, but not all, of the definitions that are currently... currently in the zoning bylaw. We made some small housekeeping changes this time around, but the idea is that ultimately, when we're ready to submit the major changes to other zoning bylaw articles that may require definitional changes, we may do the whole of Article 2 together and reorganize it, and that will be the time probably when the decision is made as to whether to move every definition in there or not. But it'll be explained in Article 2, whichever way we decide to do it. For now, these are small changes that are made, two minor changes where we're removing the definition of board and zoning bylaw because they're no longer needed. I think the term zoning bylaw is already described in Article 1 under the new proposals. And board is now zoning board of appeals, and planning board are specifically described as the boards. We are making other definitional proposals, new definitions and slightly altered definitions in conjunction with the changes we're making to the other articles, particularly Article 6, the signs, and Article 12. So they'll be revised, updated, and some new definitions related to the terms that are used in those zoning bylaw articles. But this standalone warrant article will deal with just a few additional changes that we'd like to make at this time to Article 2. As I said, there's small housekeeping changes, and we're removing a phrase that really, we don't know why it got stuck in there. I think it related to some other amendments that were made. In any event, the definition of premises, there's currently a parenthetical phrase that relates to only the land alteration section, but it doesn't apply anymore. So we're just taking that phrase out. What is new is a revised definition of height, which is intended to provide a little more certainty and precise, I guess, precision in how height of structures is measured. So height is still basically from the lower of the pre-construction grade or the finished grade to the highest point of the building roof or the highest point of the structure. That's unchanged, just clarified, because we're including a definition of the pre-construction grade and the finished grade from which you base your height regulation. So pre-construction grade and finished grade are now going to be determined by averaging at least 12 grade measurements taken at 10-foot intervals around the perimeter of the proposed foundation and the finished foundation at a distance of 10 feet from that foundation. So everybody and anybody who needs to know what the height is will be using the same baseline information to establish the height. Now, here's, if anything, the most significant change here is currently as proposed. The highest point of a building is measured at the roof line, and there will be, is proposed a definition of roof line, which would be the top of the parapet or the top of the main roof service of a flat roof, whichever is higher, the deck line of a mansard roof, or the ridge line of a hipned gambril or pitched roof. Roof line would alter the way that the height of pitched roofs is measured, because under the current definition of height, the height of a pitched roof is measured approximately midway to the ridge line. So there's no more than, I think, at least, it can't be more than five feet above the measurement, right? The ridge line can't be five feet or. So it can affect the height of new buildings that are going to be built. And I think there'll probably be just some discussion on the whys and wherefores and practicalities of that, and whether we want to leave it as measured, measuring pitched roofs where we currently measure them, or change it to the top of the ridge line. In either event, that's something the planning board should discuss tonight, and hopefully we can hear from people. And I don't know if anybody has any questions or comments on that, but that's the sum total of what's being proposed this time around. So, here we go.
All right. Thank you, Judge. So going forward, I guess we'd open up the floor to the other articles. I'm going to assume that no one in the public has any further questions about the Articles, Article 1, 3, 6, 8, and 12, although if you do, feel free to ask a question. Before we get to other questions, John Howland, as the building inspector, is there anything you'd want to add to the issue of height?
I think John Howland, the inspector.
John, come on up close to the mic. I'm sorry.
Just so people can hear you.
You're going to be a star. You're going to be a star on television.
Well, I think in regards to the height, there's two questions. One is how we measure it. So now, the way we measure it is the midline of the roof. So that's a little difficult to measure. You have dormers, hip roofs, different styles there. So that's one of the things we're trying to address. Do we go to a simpler way to measure the height of the roof to pick a point and go from, you know, the existing conditions to that new point, and that's your height? And then the second portion of this is the actual height. So whatever number that you decide on that, that could change with how you measure the height. So if it is 35 feet proposed, that's fine. If it's 37 feet, 38, 40, whatever that number is there. But just to make sure that you understand, there are two different kind of changes in this proposal that they're making. One is how and where we measure the height from, and the second would be the actual height. So if that helps you to understand where they're going with this and, you know, what we're looking at, so you almost want to make sure you separate the two different methods as you address it. So.
Thank you, John. And I think that's an important point, is we are looking at here in this step, the Springtown meeting is changing the definition to height, and just how we determine height, from what point at the bottom to what point at the top. The number, right now in the town, everywhere in town, every district, we have a 35-foot height limit. There's been discussion over the past few days in some of these forums about do we change that? Different for commercial, different for residential. When we get to the table of dimensional or area regulations in Article 5 in the fall, we will be dealing with all kinds of dimensional issues. That is where we are going to take up the number. If there's any suggestion that we should deviate from 35-foot height in any part of town, and there has been discussion, at least in one part of town, to do so, that is when we will take that up and differentiate that from what we're doing here today, which just is trying to define, how do we determine the bottom point? And the goal there is to put more data points, because we don't have much flat land in town. We have undulating properties. Sometimes the board and the building inspector gets two data points to come up with a mean grade. We're just requiring more data points so we get a better sense of what mean grade for his given property is. And then where's the top? And the proposal is the top is the top. But anyway, so the next thing I'll do here is I'll open it up to the public on this height issue, since, again, I don't think we've had many comments about anything else. I'll start with Zoom if we have anybody on Zoom.
Do you have people on Zoom? Would you have any questions?
Okay. I know Mr. Bjorklund has a question on this issue. If you have something on a past one, why don't you start with those before you go ahead?
Well, it's actually, it's not a question. It's hopefully some clarification maybe for the board, and this might actually help John as plans come in for this. I would just make a recommendation that you don't use taking at 10-foot intervals around the perimeter, because the average house in Cohasset is probably about 100 feet wide and probably 28 feet deep, maybe. So that's going to give you 240, 250 feet of foundation around the house. And if you need 12, that's going to measure about half the foundation. So I would suggest that you take at least 12 grade measurements taken at even intervals around the foundation, rather than at 10 feet. Because I can kill that on the front of the house, and the back of the house can be, I won't take any measurements there, it doesn't require it. So I think this will help.
I appreciate it, that you would game the system. No, that is helpful. No, I know, that's, and you know what? Actually, actually, I think in some permutations of this, as we debated, I think there was 12 at one point, and then it's gone back and forth to things. But the point, our objective in this is to get more data points to get a better sense of what the mean grade is than what we've been getting in many circumstances.
But the 10-foot interval won't work with that.
Right, okay. Is that better for you, John, in, you know, day-to-day practice?
Yeah, I think too, again, wherever the consistency is, if we have the consistency so everyone asks to do the same thing, and we get the same information, whether three people did the same measurements, all three will have the same answer. So that becomes a math problem. So if the data points, the number of data points that you have are spread out to, you know, four per side or three per side, or, you know.
They're equidistant.
That might, again, come closer to achieving what you want. I think that could be fine too, but certainly, whatever that consistency is, you know, wherever they're looking at it from, from one other town, they come in, the data is going to be the same from one measure.
Okay. All right. Very constructive, Steve, thank you.
And the last question that I would ask
Yes.
of that, if you want the last question. Are you going to let the public have the actual language that's going to be used before you close the public hearing?
Well.
It's on the website.
Because how do you know the exact language?
All right, I understand that. The bylaw, well, a lot of stuff. So the slideshow we presented on the public forum last week had side-by-side comparisons. It's 52 pages of slides. It's available on the zoning bylaw committee website, you can see it. Discussed this with the select board last night. We're probably not handing out 52-page handout at town meeting. The actual text of the bylaws without commentary are also on the website.
And will be in the warrant articles.
And will be in the warrant articles, and I, you know, I'm envisioning that we will have those plus the judge's summary in our presentation at town meeting at this point, but that's, we're still weeks away from town meeting. But everything is out there and available.
Tom, I think the draft warrant articles
They're on the website.
Are on the website and have been for quite some time.
Yeah. And as we've made a few typo changes, we've kept up with that, Cassandra's been very good about keeping up with it, and so they're up to date, and they're on the website. Now, trying to communicate a lot of this is difficult, and we've talked about public outreach in all kinds of forms, ways, so I'll take any suggesting ideas, but it's prohibitive for us to mail out or circulate multiple, multiple pages of documents. We have to rely to some extent on technology and people looking at it, but certainly at town meeting, people will have it. And, okay, so, anyway, Lauren, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry to interrupt, before you move on for the public's benefit, there's also hard copies of all of the articles available in the planning board office and at the town clerk's office in town hall. So for anyone who wants to see hard copies of the documents, if you don't have access to internet, whatever the case may be, there's also the option for anyone.
Right. It's just, you know, no town has ever mailed out things of that, but when the warrant comes out, the warrant's going to be pretty long, because it is going to have all the text of this. That gets mailed to the community.
You know, usually when I go to a public hearing, it'll have the language.
I appreciate that, I understand. Yes, Jack?
Jack Creighton, Select Board, 23 Cushing Road. Just so everybody knows, the Select Board will make sure that the website has all the actual language, and I believe
It does.
It does today.
It does.
But I just wanted people to clarify, all you have to do is go to the website, and you will find the actual.
I think, the other thing I think I would like to clarify is, we talked early on about having red line, literal red line comparisons, what's being, you know, what's being crossed out, eliminated, whatever. But because of all the reorganization and rewording, it was so confusing, there was no way anybody could really do it. So I think Tom's side-by-side comparison at least allows you to see where there's brand-new text in a large packet, or where a provision has been taken out. So you can see that side-by-side comparison, the difference.
Yeah, when I tried to do a red line versions of this, it was incomprehensible.
It is.
So the side-by-side, if you do look at it in the online version, there are places where there's some significant changes, where I did highlight them in red, and you'll see that on an online version. In a print version, you'd have to have a color printer to see it, but it's there in different forms, and it's a question of how we get those out, you know, in the modern world. We just can't, the court's prohibitive to mail everything out, because basically, the warrant will do that, but that's the only opportunity we'll have to do. David?
From 39 Beechwood Street, Cohasset, now on the zoning bylaw committee. I think the focus on this one was mainly for residential, and as you heard with the 12 points of measuring it around the building from the bottom, and then of course with the top, how heights would be measured, is that it's to get the bylaw to be congruent with what it was meant to be, and to remove the gaming of the system which is currently going on. And what happens now is, is that if you look at every plan that goes through town hall, you will see that every one of the buildings that get built is 35 feet, but that is not what's really going on, because it depends on where the foundation is on the mean, and then of course, what's being done on the top. So you get homes which are 40 feet, 45, or even more, because of the two points, they're cherry picking, the two points at the bottom, and so that's been going on for a long time. And this is very much a concern for not only the residents, but also the abutters, because it's increasing the mass of the house, which is also cutting off people's views in various parts of town. So the concern on the residential side was to remove this so there wouldn't be the gaming of it. And if you look at the two towns next to us, in Hingham, for instance, in their A, B, C, D, E districts of residential, they only allow 35 feet, and they also put in there that a house can only be two and a half stories. So it's not just the 35 feet, but they also restrict the number of stories that you could have to two and a half. In St. Louis, in their R1, R2, and R3 districts, it's 35 feet and three stories, but whichever is lower. So you can get, if you can get three stories within the 35 feet, that's great, but if not, then it has to be the lower of the two. So there was a concern, I know where we've had our meetings with zoning bylaw regarding commercial, how this would affect commercial, and then also, it was brought up in one of the meetings with accessory units, like garages, because the measurement would be done on accessory units as well. With respect to the commercial ones, I think it is something that we need to look at to make sure that we're not constricting the commercial, because commercial has a difference in residential, because of the kind of things you have to have in a commercial building. They have to have, you know, fire systems in there. The height of the floors are different than what would be in a residential building. There's other concerns that come up with commercial than with residential. But the primary focus of this was on the residential, is to keep 35 feet, to get it back to where it was or where it should be, and to not allow the cheating that's been going on through the years.
You said we had some Zoom.
We do. First person is Mike Sardina. Hey, Mike.
Hello, Mike Sardina, 100 Pond Street in Cohasset. Can we put up that definition for grades?
Hold on one sec, Mike, give us a moment to get it up there. Go to the judge, it's on your summary, right?
I think it's up a page, yeah. Oops.
Go down, scroll down.
Scroll down.
Scroll down, then. Hold on.
Next article.
Next page.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay, there we go. So starting with the, yeah.
So the question I have has to, is related to, and I understand what this is trying to do, I just wanted to amplify something relative to the pre-construction grade. It says, "Pre-construction grade and finished grade are determined by averaging at least 12 grade measurements taken at 10-foot intervals around the perimeter of the building, perimeter of the proposed foundation and the finished foundation." Now, if I was designing, if I was designing a house or some kind of a building on a property, I would need to know what the grades are at my proposed perimeter. And I'm assuming that what the idea, the idea behind all this is, is to inform the planning board and the building inspector early on as to what the proposed building is actually doing relative to these two things that are defined here. And basically, the proposed foundation is basically a piece of, piece of paper with some footprint on it and that's superimposed over topography. And one, if you were designing this building, you would want to know where you're going relative to your height as it relates to whatever program you're putting in the building and how that gets distributed within the, in the building, in the first floor, second floor and whatever. So with that information, you would have to go out in the field and you would have to outline the building on the property, you'd have to take the shots, whatever, whether it's 12, an average of 12 around the perimeter, whatever, and that would inform you as to what you might be able to do relative to the building's programming vertically. Given that information, you would probably decide to alter the grades in a grading plan and that would give you whatever you want to have. But it also suggests that you might alter the footprint in order to achieve some other goal that's related to distribution of program within the building. Relative to the finished foundation, that's presup, that presupposes that everything has been hunky-dory all along and now you've got a foundation in the ground and there's nothing that's going to change after that other than the fact that finished grades have been established based on whatever the foundation is doing and that comes back to whatever the decisions that were made relative to the proposed foundation and those lines on the piece of paper. So to me, there's sort of a disconnect here between proposed information that's needed in order to make informed decisions as a designer and finished information, which is actually, or finished foundation, which supposes that there's a building permit in place and the building inspector is fully aware of what the building height's going to be based on finished grades. So I was wondering if there's any way of breaking this in pieces where one is related to design information and one is related to building inspector-related information.
Let me try to answer that, Mike. Any site plan we get is going to have both existing and proposed conditions on it. And so we're not asking any engineer or applicant to do anything out of the ordinary here. And I think you're confusing the issue by bringing in the foundation and where it's going to sit. The, the point of the distinction of pre-construction grade and finished grade is that we want height measured from pre-construction grade, from what exists on the site today. We don't want a developer to come in and bring in a lot of fill and then say this new filled property is where we start the measurement. And the definition of height itself that is proposed says height at the beginning of it, the vertical distance from the lower of the pre-construction grade or the finished grade to the highest point of the building roof or the highest point of any structure. So it, it, where the foundation ends up is somewhat irrelevant to that, it's, it's where we, the measurement is starting from the grade, that's what's important and we want it to be at the lowest possible point versus existing or, or new. Someone may want to scoop out land and make the, the new grade lower, fine, then they'll measure it from that new lower grade and they'll measure up their 35 feet. But what we, but, but relying on the lower of the two is we don't want somebody to bring in fill and add to the property and then use that new added height as part of the place where they start their 35-foot measurement. Where the foundation ends up in that is almost irrelevant to, it's, that's not really the point of this. And, and so, and all these pieces of data of what someone's going to do to a site are already standard operating procedure for any site plan we receive.
I understand fully what you're trying to say. I don't agree with what you're, how you're defining it though. In order to establish the pre-construction grade, you have to know where the foundation or the proposed foundation is going to go. So that's a line on a paper, superimposed in the field with shots around a paint lines that are on the ground or stakes that are in the ground and it basically gives you the information that you're looking for. That's my point.
Correct.
And the finished, finished foundation suggests that there's concrete in the ground and maybe that's the wrong terminology, finished foundation. That's not, that's not an approved plan, that's a finished foundation as I read it. That means that there's concrete in the ground and that's a completely different need relative to understanding the grades around it. If you're planning the building, you have to figure out what the grades are at your perimeter and you have to go out and shoot those grades based on stakes in the ground.
Yes, that's something that's done regularly and normally. We get plans with a proposed building that's a rectangle or a square on a piece of paper, they measure 10 feet away from that and shoot their measurements of the pre-existing grade. That's standard operating procedure.
Well then, why are we defining it this way?
Well, the, the 10-foot off the foundation, I believe even is in our current definition, by the way, but what we are trying to do here is, it's, it's the starting point for the 35-foot measurement. That's what we want to know and at the point 10 feet from where you propose to put a building.
Well, you don't even say, you don't even say anything, 10, oh, 10 feet off the foundation, the grade could be 10 feet higher or 10 feet lower. What, you're, you're making this sound like it's 10 feet at the footprint of the building, which is more relevant than 10 feet off it. I mean, that's, how does that apply?
Well, let me, let me, I'll, I'll, again, the, the 10-foot measuring the height, the beginning measurement, 10 feet off the foundation is part of our existing bylaw, has been for a long time. I'll ask John, no, wait, I'll ask John, the building inspector, you know, the thinking behind that versus what, what Mike is saying, why aren't we measuring it at the footprint itself? Come on up, come on up, Mike, if you don't mind, I'm sorry.
Traveling Mike.
Here's Star.
It's within 10 feet in the current one, within, within 10 feet of the outside walls of the structure.
I, I think from a practical point, two things, a lot of times they'll take a topographical picture of the, of the site and measure that back at their office. They're not always doing the field measurements all at once for that thing. With a topographical layout of the property, they could move the, the building on to get their measurements from there. So, so oftentimes that's the point. Again, the guidelines of, of 12 points and the distance from the foundation is exactly that guideline to start from there and that, that gives you some flexibility there. Also, at the end of the project, oftentimes they'll ask for an as-built as to describe what the project finishes at and where it started from. So that will confirm, again, the start of the project at the end of the project. So I don't know if that helps any, but again, oftentimes knowing that the building could move or change positions on the site, you know, depending upon circumstances, if they start off with a topographical, you know, with the slopes there, they can measure those after the fact and, and, you know, move the building around and get that, that measurement.
Well, I guess, is, is the measurement of 10-foot off the foundation as the place where you do your measurements, is that pretty much standard operating procedure?
No.
All right, no, but go ahead.
We have it in our bylaw now.
We have it in our bylaw now.
Actually, you say within 10 feet.
But, but again, generally that averages out, if you're on a slope of a hill, you get a high side and a low side and they kind of average each other out and usually on either ends, they're generally there. So those are, there are unusual circumstances that will pop up once in a while that, you know, you're near the, you could be near the edge of the water and at 10 feet from your house, it drops off a 30-foot drop, you know, so I think those are very few and rare, although they do pop up and that could be something that could be addressed on an individual basis by interpretation.
And I assume the 10-foot is, what you were saying before is that what you draw on paper, where you put the rectangle on the piece of paper, when you get in the field and actually dig the foundation, you may hit ledge someplace and it shifts a little bit.
Right.
And allowing for some shift in the actual location of the foundation and giving, still giving us a consistent height measurement.
Right, you'll have the data points to make some movement in there with the 10 feet out.
If I can, Mr. Steve Bjorkland again, Mike, I'm trying to understand a little bit of what you're saying here is, is the confusion that the measurements taken in the definition 10 feet away from the foundation and that in the pre-construction and finished grade in this proposal is taken at the foundation?
The way I read this, the way I read this, 12, 12 grade measurements taken at 10-foot intervals around the foundation, that's, that to me tells me that you're measuring, let's just say, 10 feet apart at the foundation perimeter. You're not 10, you're not doing 10-foot intervals 10 feet away from the foundation.
You are.
If you want, if you want, if you want to change the cheating that's going on, measure it at the foundation and.
Change the definition.
Clarification, what is up there is a description, it's not the language, the definition of height. The definition, the language for the definition of height is actually in the warrant article, did I give you, oh, no, sorry, is actually in, yeah, is actually in the proposed warrant article. And what it says is, "The vertical distance from the lower of the pre-construction grade or the finished grade to the highest point of the building roof or the highest point of any structure other than a building."
I understand.
All right, "For purposes of this definition, the highest point of a building shall be measured at the roof line and shall not include projections," and it goes on. "The definition of pre-construction grade and finished grade is what you're getting at and that's where it's, it's determined by averaging at least 12 grade measurements taken at 10-foot equidistant intervals around the entire perimeter of the structure's proposed foundation along a continuous line 10 feet distant from said, said foundation." And your objection is to the 10-foot distant from the foundation? Is that your concern?
Well, that, I didn't even, I didn't even know that that was the case, but yes, look, I've been doing this for 50 years. If I want to, if I want to figure out a way to cheat on this thing, I can figure it out. So if you're trying to avoid the cheaters, make it more defined at the foundation and pre-construction so that the designer has all the tools that he needs relative to, to defining how his, what his footprint's configuration's going to be because it could be, as we know, there's nothing flat in Cohasset. And if you're trying to use the lowest of, of the average of, of the grades around the building, as the grades exist, pre-construction grade is defined there, finished grade is almost irrelevant in this particular case because you're defining the building based on pre-construction grade, then, then that's what you need to clarify, in my opinion. I think the one, the one attendee there who said, you know, the building could be 100 feet long and 25 feet wide and 12 measurements could be at 10-foot intervals is going to be used up very shortly. That needs to be clarified as part of this measurement at the foundation itself, not 10 feet out.
Right, and, and I, this, this is where I think there was some confusion is that as proposed, we had a 10-foot measurement between the measurement points on the ground and then we had a different 10-foot measurement of being away from the foundation. Now, based on Mr. Bjorkland's comment about the 10-foot separation of the measurement points, I, I've seen shaking heads on my board, but we haven't discussed it yet, but I think there would be a consensus to just go to the words 12 equidistant rather than 12 at 10-foot intervals. That leaves in the bylaw just the 10-foot measurement away from the foundation, the proposed foundation, as to where you're making these 12 equidistant measurements. And that, that 10-foot from our foundation has been in our bylaw, it hadn't come up before, but I, it's, it's worth thinking about and talking about and I appreciate you bringing it up, but I think that sorts through the confusion of this, but.
Yeah, I think the confusion is with equidistant is not in the summary, but it is in the bylaw. And equidistant solves all the problems and makes it very clear.
Yeah, there was, like I said, there are two 10-foot measurements being discussed, they're two different things, but, okay. Thank you, Mike. Anybody?
Do you want to keep that 10 feet away from the foundation with it?
We, we're gonna, we'll discuss that, that's the first, I, I, to be honest with you, it's the first time in two and a half years anybody's brought it up. It's been in our existing bylaw forever and it's the first time it's been brought up. But, but yeah, go ahead.
I, I think you'll find that they won't be much different in the average because you don't have 10-point in one number, so whether the average is taken 10 feet away or at the foundation, you're going to be pretty close to the same number, however you do that, but also the 10 feet away helps to address steps, decks and other additions that you have to put on in that area to account for that. So I, I think that's why the average grade at 10 feet away might be a little more helpful in kind of view on the project, so.
That's, that's why, you know, we rely on her expertise and those who build for a living on their expertise to, to help us with that. Another comment on Zoom?
So are you taking anonymous comments or no?
No.
Okay, there was an anonymous attendee comment, so we.
No. Sorry.
Nope.
All right.
We have the opportunity to not be anonymous?
Hmm? Well, if they not, if they want to not be anonymous, feel free.
If they identify themselves, I'll.
Identify name, address and if necessary, an affiliation. All right. All right, yes, ma'am.
Harold Bestie, 555 Beechwood Street. On these 12 grade measurements, could we make it so that they make sure they do the fronts, both sides and the back and then some between all of them, not just?
That's what it says.
It does say it's 12 equidistant around it, so.
Around the entire building.
Doesn't it just change it?
Yeah, 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 well, we haven't yet, we haven't yet, but I, I understand the logic behind it. All right. All right, so do we have any more comments on any of the articles from the public that are here or the public on Zoom?
No.
Okay. All right, so next, I'm just, to go in some order and get to the meeting stuff, does anybody on the board have any thoughts about the changes to articles 1, 13, 6?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, if you want to start one with one end and the other, I'm happy to make some comments on other than height.
Yeah.
But the first, the first point of order, I think, is for the planning board members to get a handle on the fact that, you know, what Steve brought up is, we don't have the draft language of the actual bylaw in front of us. I do and Judge Cutler does because, because I printed them out before we came here.
Oh, you didn't, you didn't print it out?
You got the recommendations.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you printed it out.
But we don't have actual draft language in front of us.
You do, you just said you did.
I, I made a copy of it.
And I would, and I would hope the rest of the board would have done the same thing.
This is an explanation, all right. Deidre has, has made her own copy. We have that explanation. So for the board, generally, when we're making a recommendation for the warrant for articles on the floor of town meeting, we actually have the draft language in front of us and the explanation is a preamble to that, where we're going through perhaps wordsmithing of the exact language of the zoning bylaw. And I, I don't.
All right.
I mean, I wouldn't recommend that we vote on these without actually having the exact, all of us having the exact language in front of us or saying, I don't need to see the, as an individual member, we don't need to see the exact language, I trust the zoning bylaw committee. I trust the zoning bylaw committee because they've done a great job over a long period of time." And we have KP Law doing their thing, and we trust them.
Let me say this about that. We, we, we have, all of these materials have been available to all of you.
No, it's just that what we're voting on at the hearing-
I understand that, and they're available to you.
We don't have it in front of us.
You've printed them, you've printed them. I don't know how many other members have printed them, but, you know, there's a certain amount of homework that we all have to do as members of this board.
I do the homework all the time.
I understand that.
I try to come prepared. I have the existing zoning bylaw, I have the description, I have the comparison, and I have the actual language, but we don't have draft warrant articles in front of us.
All right. If I am going to go through the, each of the articles, and if the board as a whole feels uncomfortable making the recommendation tonight, we'll, we'll extend that vote to our next meeting on the 22nd. But I, I, I have, you know, I know staff has distributed things. It's out there. Again, you, you have to take some personal responsibility as a member of the board to inform yourself about this. I don't know in what form it was supposed to be delivered, other than the ways it has been delivered, but we'll move on. Lauren?
So just a point of clarification, and this is no fault of the staff that's here today. Typically, I would typically have the package for you, the documents. Not why Clark is frustrated. Given that it's been an interim situation, I have not physically been in town hall, and I didn't actually know that I was on contract to do this until yesterday, so I'm really just stepping back into this. With that said, what we can do in the interim right now is, Justin is going to pull up the articles on the screen, so you can see the actual language in front of us. Justin, if you could make that just a tad bigger, because it's hard to see where I'm sitting.
Yep.
And that way now everyone-
Do you have all of them?
-follow along of the actual draft articles.
Yeah, he should have all of them.
Okay.
I do, I'll just have to-
All right, yeah, no, let's start at the beginning with the Article 1, one, if we can.
One of the problems is that we may have done our homework, but the public may not have known where to find the materials. They might have used what was provided for them and us on a, on a shortened basis, and so it's not clear that the public would, would have seen this.
The public should have seen it, because it's been available in at least two different forms for weeks.
So for the public hearing notice, it's advertised two weeks in advance of the public hearing date. At that time, that's when it gets notified that you can go to the town website to find the articles, and you can also find them at town hall and have the planning board office. So the location of where the full articles has been available all of this time. The point of what you see tonight, Judge Cutler's summary, is to give a summary document of, you know, in case you don't want to go through the weeds of going through all of the article language, it's a supplementary document, it's not to replace it. And the clarification for tonight, again, is that Judge Cutler has been reviewing the summary document on the screen, that's what the public has been seeing and what we've been looking at tonight. At this point now, we can take a look at the actual draft article language. And again, apologies for the confusion here about this documentation system. In the future, we'll make sure that there's actual hard copies in your packets as well.
And it's not my intent to shove any vote down anybody's throat tonight. If you don't feel comfortable voting on any one of these articles tonight, we will continue the hearing until the 22nd. We only have, I think, one agenda item that night otherwise, and we'll have plenty of time to deal with it on the 22nd. All right, so this is Article, the first article, warrant article. Yep, sorry, Justin?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, and it is the amendments to Article 1 and 13. Again, I don't know, Judge Cutler, if you want to walk us through it again?
Well, the first change is the change of the title. It's now just called zoning, and it would now be called the Town of Cohasset Zoning Bylaw. Just, the second change is that we're changing the heading of Article 1 from scope, broaden it out to authority, purposes, and intent. The third change is to delete the title, actually, Article 1.1, which says title, which we don't need anymore, it has a title, and Article 301.2, authority in their entirety, and substitute a different new Section 1 authority. And that, again, describes that the town's zoning bylaws adopted under General Laws 40A, the Zoning Act, and Article 2, Section 6, Article 89 of the, of the Home Rule Amendment of the Massachusetts Constitution. And then the next change is to renumber and retitle the Purpose section to purposes, and amend the existing text by adding an introductory phrase, which says, "The purposes of this zoning bylaw include, but are not limited to, the following." There was no introductory phrase before. It just said purposes in the list. Then we're going to add three additional purposes to the existing purposes. The existing purposes are listed A to F in the current zoning bylaw, and this will add G, H, and I. As I mentioned, it's conserving natural resources and preventing pollution, encouraging diverse housing opportunities, and encouraging the most appropriate use of land in accordance with the town's master plan.
Excuse me, Judge Cutler. Maybe I, I had a question about H, to encourage diverse housing opportunities, wondering if that's, if that's language from other zoning bylaws or a reference to something that I'm unfamiliar with, because it doesn't, it doesn't mean what I think it's supposed to mean.
What?
Could you expand on that?
Yeah.
Well, the, the phrase to encourage diverse housing opportunities.
It's an objective of our master plan. That's one.
Is that the language from our master plan, though?
No, it's a summary.
Or is it, is it close?
It's a summary of the language.
That would be my, my only question on this whole section, is that-
It's a summary of our objective.
H phrase. What's that, Tom?
It's a summary of the objective in the master plan to have diverse housing opportunities.
I, I know, but the word opportunities, I'm not sure that was the word that we had in the master plan, but I-
There's, there's also a direct reference to the master plan in I.
That's right. I, I just, I think, I-
Alternatives.
I talked about this earlier, and I thought it was to encourage diverse housing types or diversity in, in housing, you know, as opposed to just a, a whole town through, full of similar housing types, to encourage housing diversity. And just the word opportunities, it's, I'm not sure what it means exactly, and I'm not sure where it came from. But I don't have any other questions about, am I allowed to ask questions? Is this okay?
Yes, you are, you are, but it's the first time you're, you've been on the zoning bylaw committee, and it's the first time you're bringing it up. That's all. It's the first time you're bringing it up, and you've been on the bylaw committee for seven, seven months. That's all.
Okay, I'm bringing it up now, because we're, we're finally at a public hearing.
Do you have a suggested replacement for the word?
This is the final language where the planning board has the opportunity to tweak and understand and try and get the, the wording to be as perfected as possible. Do we want to do that or not? And I, I would leave that to the tender mercies of my other planning board members to say, maybe it's close enough, Clark, we can move on.
Well, I, I, long debated that the perfect bylaw is impossible. No one will ever write the perfect bylaw, even though Judge Cutler was very good at it. But what's the objection to that word and what's the suggested replacement? I'm open to the opportunity, to the idea of changing the word, but it is an objective of our master plan to encourage housing choices in this community. Is housing choice better? Housing choices, diverse housing choices, would that work?
I don't know. I, I asked what the specific language of the, of the master plan was, but I, I, you know, I would say, if we're going to vote on this right now-
Hold on, hold on a sec.
On this, on this section right now.
Lauren?
I'd like to know what that-
I have the master plan up, and I have a section that summarizes the housing goals, but that'd be helpful if I read that.
Why don't you, please?
The analysis of housing goals and needs, housing needs and development constraints, as well as public input from the forums, indicate the need for more housing options in Cohasset, whether that be increased affordability, additional rental opportunities, more housing support for smaller households, or more options for seniors. These goals will position the town to best address these needs in a way that complements its unique character. There's three goals here. Goal one, diversify class, class, housing stock and promote increased options for households of varying sizes, incomes, tenures, and ages. Goal two, increase the supply of deed restricted affordable housing qualified for the state subsidized housing inventory. And goal three, support seniors as they age and provide housing options that will enable them to live in private Cohasset.
I, I've heard the word three or four times. Options is the word.
Options seems to be a frequently used word.
Fine.
Thanks, Lauren. That's helpful, because it seems like, you know, we're, we're operating a little bit in a vacuum here, and the word opportunities just jumped out at me as, as not being the right word.
Thanks.
So maybe it would be to encourage diverse housing options.
Yes, I just worked at that and said that.
What's that?
I just said options is the word. It was mentioned four times, so, in the master plan.
Oh, I didn't hear you.
I'm sorry.
Was I talking at the same time?
No, probably, but that's all. We've got to get used to being back face to face, really. So, David, yeah, I'm sorry.
Zoning bylaw committee. I find the dialogue curious, because the zoning bylaw committee, of which you were on, Clark, debated with this, came up with this language, and you voted for it.
I did, but I have a different role now as a planning board member, where this is, this is a recommendation for the floor of town meeting and all the other boards. So please don't pick on me for bringing it up now, when I'm trying to perfect and do my job.
All right. I, I don't think that was-
All right, I'm, I'm not going to, I'm not going to let this debate go on, but the consensus is to change the word to options, that I'm gathering, that's what we'll do. All right.
Are you taking comments from the public still or no?
If it's on this particular article, I will.
Virginia Jensen, 542 Jerusalem Road, Cohasset, we have, she just wants to make a comment. We have, we have the information that we need and were sent to us in all ways. Thank you, exclamation point.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. All right. Justin, if you could scroll down.
Yes.
There was a provision that talked about repealing all other zoning bylaws that were ever enacted by the town. It's really unnecessary. This is the zoning bylaw once it's enacted, and the effective date is in the statute, and it depends upon the date of town meeting, and then, and, and to make sure that all subsequent steps are followed in order to get that bylaw approved by the Attorney General and ultimately printed. So it's unnecessary to have the effective date in there. So that's taken out. There is a provision, basic requirements, which we're substituting with two new sections that essentially say the same thing, but I think say it in a clearer way, I hope say it in a clearer way, and, and a stronger way. The first section will say that the requirements in this zoning bylaw are the minimum requirements necessary to achieve its stated purposes. Those are those purposes listed A, now A to I. And the second part, and that just replaces those, that other one. And then we have 1.4, which is conflict with other laws, which is in case there's a conflict between this zoning bylaw and any other bylaw, law, ordinance, covenant, or agreement, the more restrictive provisions shall govern. Okay.
Okay. I, I have a little issue with that one.
What?
Because 48, Section 6 gives one type of protection to these single lot exemptions, and that is more restrictive than what we have in Cohasset.
What this means is, somebody who has, let's say they have a, a deed restriction on their property that allows them to do particular things, and they come in and they say, "Well, the zoning bylaw says I can't do it, but I have, I, I was granted this, this right in my deed so that I can do this thing." Well, no, the more restrictive provision is the zoning bylaw. On the other hand, if the zoning bylaw says you may have a swimming pool, and somebody bought a piece of property that says can't have a swimming pool on this property, that's what's going to control, okay? It's, it's, it's a very, I'm not going to debate it with you, this is a very standard conflict of laws statement that's, that's in just about every bylaw.
So if I ask that another way, is it a conflict that our bylaw is going to allow single lots to be protected longer than state law?
No, it's not, no.
So it's, do they, those lots will still be protected with that language in there, even though the other laws were-
Because you pointed to us-
There's no, there's no law that says we can't. If the zoning act said you may not allow a lesser restriction, the zoning act restriction is the only one you can apply, then anything the town would do that was, that was in conflict with that, the more restrictive one applies. Okay.
I'm not arguing.
No, no, and we're also the one that pointed out to us, the SJC case, that clarifies what we can and cannot do with respect to the single lot exemption.
Right.
The rights that existed under that, that exist today, still exist, no matter whether we amend it, repeal it, do anything to it. All right, so-
And then there's another provision that says, if, if any provision in this is determined by judicial process to be invalid, that won't affect the validity necessarily of any other provision, unless, of course, the court says it does. All right. We're deleting application in its entirety. It was an unnecessary section that just said this bylaw applies. And further, we're deleting Article 13 in its entirety. This is the one that talks about the scope and purpose a little more.
Essentially-
Essentially the same content.
Essentially, the thing, the provisions of 13 are being moved into the language we just talked about in Article 1. All right, so-
Just a quick comment on 1.4, that-
Scroll up.
Right now, our, our zoning bylaw under 301.5, it basically says, which, which is a conflict, whichever, whichever is the most restrictive governs when there's, but when there's a conflict with a higher authority, the higher, higher authority will prevail. That higher authority phrase is in a part of the new language.
It, it, it's not very helpful language, but the point, I believe what the point is, which is, doesn't need to be said in, in the bylaw, is if there is a federal law that preempts local law, the federal law is what's going to govern.
Or, or the state.
Or the state.
Everybody understands it's a hierarchy.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So it doesn't-
We don't need that language that is, that is, that is there.
It's a gift.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Does anybody else on the board have any comments, thoughts about this particular zoning article?
I, I just wanted to raise a question, which, because I'm not on the zoning bylaw working group, probably wouldn't have been raised, but communities around the state are starting to adopt language that is incorporating the recognition that climate change and natural disasters are going to be a continuous part of our lives. And I am wondering whether or not, under the front end, the very first page, where we talk about expand current list of purposes for the zoning bylaw by adding the following, communities are starting to add language that is saying things which essentially are, we're going to be regulating the placement of developments which are in environmentally sensitive areas where the prospect of danger and, and harm is very high. I mean, there, that's just, I'm making that up.
No, no, and it's good to point out, because dealing with climate change, and, you know, we had a forum on this, we know there's a model bylaw from NAPC on the subject, and we are intending to address it and, and probably propose something about it in our fall package.
On the fall, okay.
But in terms of, you're saying, put it here in these list of purposes, and I'm just questioning, is the master plan addressed that at all? Because the, the purpose of, of meeting the objectives of the master plan might cover this for the moment.
No. We don't specifically call out climate change in chapter.
All right.
Could we leave in threads? Yes. I would need to do more research on what language would be appropriate.
Yeah, I, I think if, if we bring in a new climate change slash resiliency bylaw in the fall, I think at that point in time, we will have the time of what other language can we put here in a purpose in Article 1? And as part of that article, we can, you know, do two parts. Here's the new bylaw, oh, and by the way, add this purpose to Article 1. I think that would be appropriate, a very good point, and thank you. So let me just go purposes. All right. Any other comments from the board about Article 1? Or this art, well?
Just a-
I know, we're at board, board-
I haven't gone forward to find out about the numbering of the articles, but if you remove in entirety Article 13, does that mean that you've changed the numbers of 14?
Not right now. I think right now it'll be-
They're going to redo that?
When they ultimately redo everything, they may move a lot of- When they ultimately redo everything, they may move a lot of numbers around.
That's what I'm saying, is you can't just do the numbers.
Exactly.
The whole bylaw.
Exactly.
In the working group, we did look at models, you know, we have 22 articles, and we looked at models of consolidating those. And that, all the changes that come in the fall are going to dictate how that happens and if it happens, and probably the last article would be, oh, no, here, by the way, here's a new whole numbering system of the bylaw, if we go in that direction. But right now, what would happen in the interim period is that Article 1 be amended, Article 13 would be shown as deleted, go on with Article 14, 15, 16.
That's fine, I was just curious.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, good to point that out. All right. Is the board prepared to take a vote on a recommendation for the article that will change Article 1 and 13?
With the?
With the change of the word to options, yes.
I would just have, with regard to options, can we add options as described in the town's master plan? We're going to change opportunities to options. Let's just further define what options and where they're found, just like we did in Item I. Also do the same for Item H. Options as found, as described in the town's master plan.
I think about that, because then you might have to almost do that for every single one.
Yeah. Yeah, hold on one second. The judge was just pointing out that you might end up doing that to every purpose we had.
But it was done in I, right next to it.
Yeah, well, I just lot a lot of things in state statutes that, you know, you have a catch-all provision at the end, and that's the catch-all, other objectives of the master plan. But we may, we have, you know, before we had a master plan, there's discussions at various times in the last 20 years about diverse housing opportunities. So, you know, you can have those objectives independent of the master plan, but I think in combination of writing that and then the catch-all of I, I think we cover the bases with that. More.
Devil's advocate, in the future, you may find diverse housing opportunities that are not outlined in the master plan. And would that be a harm for a judge to look at? No.
As a matter of fact, the MBTA housing mandate that's coming down on us is not mentioned in the master plan. It's new since then, so, and we are going to have to address it, so. Yeah, go ahead, Jack.
No, I would just point out that probably the things that we have, we've incorporated that are of value, but we don't want to kind of incorporate the whole master plan into this, because this is a very specific zoning, you know, article. So we incorporated that. Part of what we're really doing here is Judge Cutler explained, this part, we are taking a foundational thing, simplifying and making it very, very specific. It's also making it easier to get it passed now. Some of the other things that have been mentioned will be handled. Hopefully, we get it all done in the fall. We might not be able to. And some of those are going to require a great deal of work, of all of us. But anyways, to answer your questions, we've mentioned the things that we want to mention in there. I don't think we want to drag the whole.
Yes, I have two comments. One is I am not clear whether or not we've fully addressed what Mike Sardino said. And so.
Different Warren article, I'm just asking.
Okay, okay.
We're not voting on all of them, just one at a time.
One at a time.
Sorry, sorry.
That's it?
Yep.
Okay, all right. So does the board feel they're in a position to vote on a recommendation for this article? Yes or no?
Yes.
All right. Somebody make a motion that the board give a positive recommendation to pass the article that amends Article 1 and Article 13 of the zoning bylaw?
With the change of this.
With the change of the word opportunities to options.
And resilience.
No.
No, the resilient, if we add resiliency, we'll do it coupled with a new climate change slash resiliency bylaw.
Great.
I think we should also, sorry, this is a point of information. The Conservation Commission itself is making changes in their own operating procedures and looking forward toward their regulatory authority. And they are talking about such things as floodplain overlay districts, stormwater regulations, wetland regulations, et cetera. So as we go forward into the fall, we want to be coordinating with them.
I have thrown it out very preliminarily to the zoning bylaw committee two meetings ago, the idea of when we get to that part and get to our existing floodplain bylaw, even though they do not deal with zoning and regulate from a different perspective, that we bring them in in the process to help us out. We are, you know, for example, wind and solar, subbing that out somewhat to the Alternative Energy Committee to help us rewrite that. So we are, you know, we're not averse to subbing out and bringing other boards into this, and that's been thought of, and it's a good idea. So because the result of what they do and the zoning bylaw, even though they're two different laws, should be in sync with each other. So, all right. Somebody make the motion?
Did you make the motion? You made the motion.
Oh, I guess I can make it. The motion is that the planning board give a positive recommendation for the article that will amend Article 1 and Article 13 of the zoning bylaw.
Second.
Second for me. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Well, we'll do a roll call.
Clark Brewer, aye.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, and subject to the change of the word opportunities to options. All right, we'll do alphabetical, this is our Zoom habit of doing it, alphabetical roll call. Clark?
Clark Brewer, aye.
Tom Callahan, aye.
Amy Glassmore, aye.
Kevin, aye.
Deirdre, aye.
Chris, aye.
Great, thank you. All right, next, we'll move on to the article that would amend Article 3 of the zoning bylaw. All right, and again, the judge had explained in her summary that this is mostly in the nature of housekeeping changes.
It's a rewrite. It was too difficult to compare and contrast every single sentence that was moved or rephrased, but essentially it does exactly what you have now, which is you list your districts, that everything is divided into districts. So it's divided into, it's 10, not 14. That should have been changed. Cassie? That should have been 10.
I thought I did change it, but I.
It didn't happen, okay. All right, we need to get that changed.
3.1, the number 14 will change to 10, because we only have 10 zoning districts.
Yeah, 10, and these are what we are going to refer to as the base zoning districts, okay? And they're the same, we haven't changed them, the abbreviations are the same, they're just listed a little differently than they are. And then Part B is the overlay districts, and we have taken out of the overlay district list the listing for cluster development overlay district, which is actually not an overlay district. Cluster development is allowed in two different districts in town, no matter how those boundaries are changed. So it was incorrectly titled an overlay district, so it's taken out of the list. 3.2 is the discussion of the zoning map, and that has been rewritten to really identify the zoning map as consisting of several different, currently several different zoning maps, including the floodplain zoning map and the general zoning district map. But there are two, there are two districts, overlay districts, that are not shown on the overall map, and so we've had to include the reference to the maps that show those district boundaries. Ultimately, as I mentioned, our goal is to get it all on one map, other than the floodplain, and we'll be able to change that when we do. So that just goes on, that just describes the boundaries. And then the zoning map, together with all the boundaries and notations and everything else that's shown on the map, is part of the zoning bylaw, just in case anybody didn't think so. And that the zoning map and any future maps would be kept on file in the office of the town clerk. There's no need for some of the existing language that says the official, it's only official if the town clerk has certified it. I mean, that's not necessary. The town clerk can certify it if you need a certified copy. Okay, so. No, zoning map is one map, it consists of several, these listed maps is what it's called.
And after the fall, you know, one of the things, if we don't get an update for this town meeting, in the fall, we are going to address whether we consolidate districts, rename districts, we're not making any changes now, but after the fall, we will have all the changes we might make to this article, and we'll get one map done once, not pay twice for the same kind of work. So the end result after the fall is that we will have a new, up-to-date map that shows everything it should show.
And then the.
If there's typos or differences, do you want to correct them?
Sure.
On B, halfway down, it says to top PF the bank.
Top of, yes, yes, that is a typo, yes, thank you.
Above that, two lines, therefrom, is that one word?
Yes.
Yes.
It's a lawyer word.
Therefrom, is that a lawyer word?
It is.
That's why we don't understand it.
Okay, so these are basically just tinkering a little bit. You can, you really have to compare the existing language, but it basically says the same thing. If it follows, on the map, you look and the boundary appears to follow the street, it follows the street. If it appears to follow a water body or it runs parallel to it, that's what it does. And if there are any distances, I don't think there are at present anything on the zoning map that says a distance of the boundary from a particular property line, but that was just boilerplate language that's in there. And then, continue. I think these rules are basically the same. If it's, if a boundary line is indicated at a specific elevation, that's the elevation above sea level, the only where, there's an extra comma there that needs to come out, the only place that that really appears now is in the floodplain district.
I was going to say, that's way out of date. Isn't it 1982?
That's, that was the question that we had. What are you using now?
It's 1980.
The 1982, yeah.
So that's.
Yeah.
Talk about.
No, it's not things we haven't addressed, tried to address, but we didn't catch.
But we never got a satisfactory final answer, so. Yeah. I mean, it wouldn't matter if we kept 29, because it says unless otherwise specified on the zoning map or in this zoning bylaw, and the zoning map for the floodplain would say what elevation we'd use, so it's okay. But we will, I think it's probably a good idea to change that. And this is the, F is the issue. Is the case where the base zoning district boundary line divides a lot that we went on infinitum about, talking about extending up to 50 feet.
Which we don't have that many examples. We did talk about it in the bylaw committee, and we don't have a lot of examples where districts are divided, a single lot is divided.
I have one, sorry to interrupt.
No, there are some that come, but we don't have a lot of them.
I have one comment for discussion on F.
All right, hold on one second, let me make sure the judge is finished. Are you finished?
Yeah, I'm finished with that.
Now, does the board have any comment?
That's the end of the section, F.
Yes, does the board have any comments on this Article 3?
I do.
Please do.
Thank you, Tom. So it seems to make sense where you might have a residence B and C district on one lot, to be able to extend to the size of a house or something like that, the use would be the same among residential districts. Which makes me wonder why we wouldn't have the dimensional regulation.
That would be, that would be a substantive change from what you have now. What we tried to do is steer clear of substantive change, but that's a different, yeah, that's a different discussion.
All right, I mean, what we did have before was that if it was in the floodplain, you couldn't do it, period. We got rid of that.
Well, we said this only applies.
But it made it almost useless.
No, no, this says specifically, this only applies to base zoning districts, it does not apply to overlay districts.
So the floodplain would still apply?
The floodplain applies wherever the boundary is, you can't extend into the floodplain. If something isn't allowed in the floodplain, you can't.
Then I don't think this does anything for anyone, so I don't have a problem with it. I don't think it helps anyone, and it being there just takes up space.
It's something that, again, is being carried over from what we have now without needing to make change where change is unnecessary. And it's not changing how we've dealt with floodplains and overlay districts in any way, shape, or form, it's just basically rewording what we have, as the judge explained, in a clearer and more consistent.
I don't have any other questions or comments for consideration on this section.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else on the board have any comments about the amendments to Article 3? Prepared to vote on those?
How about the public? Is, judging, is all you did was add one of base districts? Is that what the change was?
I mean, no, it's described a little bit differently in the current bylaw.
Yeah, I have it.
Oh, it's much, it says, when a district boundary line divides a lot that is in one ownership of record at the time such as adopted, that seems to be an unnecessary statement. It's a lot, whatever ownership it's in. A use that is permitted on one portion of the lot may be extended 50 feet into the other portion, provided the first portion includes the required lot width and depth. That's taken out, and only if the lot has frontage on a street in a less restricted district. This language reduces that, makes it a little bit, I think, clearer than what it is. The board, however, may authorize by special permit the increase of such district to not more than 200 feet. Then it went on to say, this allowance does not apply to floodplain and watershed protection districts. I avoided that by saying when a base district boundary divides a lot.
And at the beginning of the bylaw, it defines what the base districts are. All right, so I'll make the motion that the board give a positive recommendation to the passage of the article that will amend Article 3 with the changes that in 3.1A, the number 14 is going to switch to 10 for the number of base districts we have, and in 3.3D, the year 1929 will be changed to 1982.
I would recommend instead of press time, to something that's going to be updated once again.
We don't know if it's going to be.
Go to the then-current datum in place.
Well, that's supposedly 1982.
But it's going to change again.
It'll change. It's not a permanent feature.
It may be added.
Oh, I was just saying, can you put in like a catch-all language to the then-current?
You mean, just say the current genitive data.
As established by the Massachusetts Division of.
Established by the USGS.
All right, yeah, all right. Okay, all right.
Specified.
All right, yeah, it saves what, you know, shows up all the time at town meetings of a housekeeping amendment in the future. All right, so the change to 3.3D will be from 1929 to the then-current geodetic datum.
And there is a reference, I think you can find it on the Massachusetts website, then Mass Highway, actually, I think, has it.
Someone second? Thank you, Deirdre. Roll call, vote, all in favor?
Aye, Clark Brewer, aye.
Tom Callahan, aye.
Amy Glassmore, aye.
Kevin, aye, aye.
Chris, aye.
Thank you. All right, the next one is for the amendments to Article 6.
Excuse me, point of order.
Yep.
I think that Judge Cutler went through this, I don't see any major things for discussion on this, and it's a nine-page.
All right, well, then, are you prepared to vote? Are you prepared to vote on it?
As is, I don't have any comments on this section.
All right, anyone else? All right, and I'll make a motion that the board give a positive recommendation to the proposed amendments to zoning bylaw Article 6.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, vote, all in favor?
Clark Brewer, aye.
Tom Callahan, aye.
Amy Glassmore, aye.
Kevin, aye, aye.
Chris, aye.
Thank you. All right, Article 12. All right, Article 12.
No, it's Article 8.
Oh, well, I--
Do you want to skip that one?
No, let's keep--
Well, let me ask you about, oh, yeah, no, Article 8, and again, Article 8 is the one, many of these articles are going to have multiple parts to them. The first one is changing one, deleting 13, all in one law article. There's going to be others in six that are going to change some definitions that are related to six, that kind of thing. This is the one article that, at the moment, is going to have two separate votes. So the first vote is to do the housekeeping changes on Article 8. The second part of the vote will be to change our coacid, single lot exemption exception by adding a date by which a plan has to be of record, June 8. So I would take the recommendation, always one vote, if everybody's prepared to do that.
Does your voice drop at the end of the last sentence? It's hard to hear.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So, no, so we, we have, it will be presented to town meeting as a two-step voting process, step one being just housekeeping changes to the existing Article 8, step two being to change Cohasset's version of the single lot exemption exception by adding a date by which a plan has to be of record, that date being 1923. Is there any debate or comment about Article 8?
Look, I think we went into sufficient detail in Judge Cutler's introduction earlier tonight.
Okay.
And I will make a comment. I, I just don't see that this is going to get too many people upset, really. I, I mean, it sets a date of June 2023.
It returns us to the, we had a date and a deadline in 1955--
For new plans, but even if someone came to the planning board now with a new A and R or a subdivision plan, we would still want them to be conforming to current zoning. We wouldn't say, oh, you can follow whatever this non-conforming single lot exemption formula is for your brand-new lots. We wouldn't let that happen. Tom, I don't know if you were listening.
No, I was, I'm listening, I just--
We wouldn't let that happen. So, I mean--
Yes.
--after June 2023, I don't see any single lot exemption qualifying lots coming. I mean, I just, and if it protects whatever rights people have under our zoning bylaw, which may or may not be different from Mass General law--
You have one.
--that, I don't see it helping or hurting anybody in, in the future.
It is, and I was just clarifying with the judge while you were speaking, that single lot exemption doesn't apply to lots created by A and Rs at the beginning, so--
Right, so what are we talking about? Like, what hypothetical lot could, could be created between now and June?
It's not going to, no, it would apply, no, it would apply, and if somebody came in with an A and R plan to the planning board and created two lots that conformed to today's zoning--
Yes.
And in the future--
Yeah.
The town meeting amended zoning and said, no, you need 200 feet of frontage, that lot would be protected under this current zoning.
Yeah.
Okay. It's only after June 23rd that they would have to, they might still be protected if they meet the requirements of the single lot exemption in the statute.
Sure, or they conform to current zoning.
Or they can, well, yeah, any lot that conforms to current zoning now or in the future won't even need it.
Yeah.
It's just that there was, there was a case decided a number of years ago where a town tried to eliminate their special protections for non-conforming lots, and just said, no, we don't want to do this anymore, and they, it was more generous than the statute. They eliminated it, and the court said, no, 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 any lot that was existing, single, any--
What case was that?
That was the, Deidre, I think it is, I think it's Deidre.
You're the one who brought it up, there was two names--
It's, it's Deidre versus, no, it's Deidre, I think it's Orleans, I think it's Orleans, yeah. And I can send you that, that site. But basically, you can't just eliminate it for lots that were already in existence, for lots for single and two-family use. They have those protections, right.
Yeah, when, this, this may, had once appeared controversial, because when the bylaw working group first brought up an idea of bringing this to the December 21 town meeting, we were talking repeal, and that did generate some public comment. And then Mr. Bjorkland was kind enough to point out this case we're all talking about, and, you know, I gave the selectman the nutshell version of it last night, is basically, Orleans had a bylaw like ours, the lot in question was legal under that bylaw in 1970, they repealed the bylaw in 71. It wasn't until almost 30 years later that somebody tried to develop that lot. The Supreme Judicial Court decision was in the year 2000, 29 years after the repeal, and the Supreme Judicial Court said that if a town has granted extragrandfathering rights beyond what the state law does, and people, those rights attach to somebody's lot, they get to keep those rights, no matter what the town does, for repeal or amendment. So that's why even this amendment is not affecting anybody who has rights today, and the question's been asked, how many lots is this affect? You have to do an individual lot-by-lot analysis to know the history of the ownership of the lot before you can do that. So we can't say for sure, but anybody who has rights today will still have those rights. It's, we are cutting off the development of new rights in the future, and math has shown in these forums and various discussions to be a lot less controversial than what we talked about a year ahead, so.
I just wanted to also, I misstated something, and I realized that there was a decision by the committee that took out the reference to lots for single or two-family residential use, and we just say, we keep what is there now, which is the lot having less than the required area may be built upon if, so just either you meet, and if you, as long as you meet any of those requirements. So we're not changing, we're not changing it to clarify that it only applies to lots in the residence districts. Now, if you want to do that, we can put that language in, but the committee took it out at one point.
So you're only referring to the area?
No, a lot having less than the required area width, depth, and/or frontage, which is what is in the bylaw today.
And the, the other thing that's not being changed, that if the Cohasset exception applies, we do require a minimum lot size of 9, 15, and I think 20--
And that's, that stays here.
That is staying. That is staying. So we require a minimum lot size if you benefit from the exception that's larger than the state, so we're not getting little postage stamp lots developed. We're keeping that number in, going forward. So with that said, if everybody's ready to vote for it, I will--
I, um--
Yeah, go ahead.
Would you, with regard to Article 8 amendment, proposed amendment--
I don't have the--
One, the final sub-bullet there, you got two main bullets, and then you got three sub-bullets. You talk about--
Scroll down a bit, where are you talking?
I'm sorry, Kevin is referencing the summary document.
The summary document, but on the summary document, there's no brackets around the term "non-use." The term "non-use" defined in our bylaws elsewhere, it just may not have been factored--
No, "non-use" is just not using it.
Well, I could just see a potential issue with one person's definition of "non-use" being different from another person's definition--
Well, the term "non-use" is not in the bylaw. That was my, that was my, it was in the summary, it's just a generalized thing. We can look at that.
Go back for the bylaws, so.
Yeah.
It's Justin, thank you.
Yeah, I think going down to, almost to the end--
Is it the abandonment?
Yeah, it's 300.87.
And this is, this is where the definition of abandonment that's now in Article 2 is being moved to this article because it's very specific to this article, and it's being amended somewhat.
So, once it's abandoned, this makes it clear, can't be revived or resumed, okay? Can't change your mind. "A non-conforming use will be deemed abandoned upon its replacement with a conforming use." "Discontinuance of a non-conforming residential use for more than three years," that's in the current bylaw, "or discontinuance of any other non-conforming use for more than two years will be deemed abandonment." "Abandonment of a use by discontinuance occurs if, one, there is a removal of characteristic equipment or furnishings associated with the non-conforming use without replacement by similar equipment or furnishings within the applicable two- or three-year period, and two, or two, the non-conforming use ceases to operate on the premises for the applicable period."
All right, so it appears sufficiently written in the actual document--
Okay, that, okay.
So I think in the summary document, the use of the term "non-use" would be--
That's a shortcut.
--confusing to someone looking at the summary document and looking for that term in our definition.
Okay.
So appreciate the clarification there. If we had said abandonment in the summary document, that might have been helpful.
Okay.
Okay, all right, I'll make a motion that the board--
One second. Under Steve, there's an awful lot of bank properties out there that are vacant for more than two years. If they're non-conforming, they can't have a house anymore?
"The Special Permit Granting Authority may extend the two-year limit if it determines that extraordinary circumstances have prevented the use and maintenance of the non-conforming structure despite good faith efforts of the property owner."
Extraordinary.
Well, that's up to, that's up to the Special Permit Granting Authority.
So the banks--
I think it's also in our existing, but--
Just for clarification.
No, I, I understand that, and--
We are not in the business of providing town council for your development business.
All right, Jack, I'm not going to--
You know what I'm doing.
I know what you're saying, but I've also been in front of boards for, on behalf of a client, where I've had to argue that.
Yeah.
And most boards that I've ever dealt with have been reasonable when it's a foreclosure situation and other things that are out of the owner's particular control.
The committee added that.
But it is, it's leaving the discretion to our zoning board of appeals to make that call, and I, there might be some circumstances where the two years was, you know, that it was the fault of the owner for not acting within the two years, and I think it's fine to leave that, as we do, you know, under the special permit, our zoning board has a lot of discretion to make decisions about something getting developed or not, or expanded, or reconstructed, and the planning board has the same power with respect to the village. And I don't think there's any problem in leaving it to our zoning board to make a good faith decision when that kind of circumstance exists. And I don't believe it's, I don't think that's any different than what we've had now, but certainly in practice--
Well, this, that was added by the committee after the committee's discussion, actually, because it was thought, well, what if you've got a property in probate or something, and you can't do anything with the property, what do you do? Well, that's the kind of extraordinary circumstance, but it's not the owner's fault, they're not allowed to do it, so--
I've never seen a town board say no in those kinds of situations. I, you know, again, my, my limited experience of doing that in front of a town board, but I've never seen it, and I don't think our boards have a history of being, you know, crazy unreasonable in trying to deny things, so.
I'll give you a call about that one, shortly in the future.
Oh, I'm sure, yeah. I'm always there to stand corrected, you know, but there's one, everybody can pick out one situation where a board said no, but I, you know, I, I think the community would, has and would trust our zoning board to make the right decision in a, in a given situation. All right, I'm going to make a motion that the board recommend approval of the amendments to Article 8, both in Part 1 and Part 2.
Second.
Second, thank you, all right.
Did you want to question whether they want to limit it to the residential or not?
Oh, all right, I'm sorry, the judge reminded me before I make that motion. So this is the question of limiting our bylaw to residential structures, to make it clear. State law makes it clear, ours does not. I said at a zoning bylaw committee, and Steve, of course, you might find an example to correct me, but I've never seen the single lot exemption applied in a commercial situation, commercial lot situation, but to the extent it is a possible wedge that somebody could use, the change would be to put the word--
A lot for single or two-family residential use.
In Section 8.1.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we were talking about a lot in the residence A, B, or C district.
Right.
Right.
And that would go where in that?
That would, essentially, we'd almost be putting back what it, what it says now--
In the single lot--
In the single lot exemption. We'd say that a detached, single-family dwelling or other lawful building may be constructed on a lot in the residence A, B, or C district.
And then, again, that would be done as an abundance of caution, even though it's never been raised, that the Cohasset exception only applied to single or two-family zoned lots, as does the state law. So with that amendment, I'll make my motion to approve Article 8, both of its parts, or make a, that the board make a recommendation to approve the amendments to Article 8 in both of its parts with that amendment, to make sure it's limited to just residential application.
Second.
Thank you. All, all in favor?
Clark Brewer, aye.
Tom Callahan, aye.
Amy Glassmore, aye.
Kevin Hyde, aye.
Chris Pla, aye.
Thank you. All right. With this deal with Article 12, I'm going to suggest, ahead of time, that probably if we expect the definition of height, we will continue this for our next meeting. Article 12, and the judge has explained it, a lot of it is reorganization and clarification of language. The substantive change is to our maximum fine that can be assessed. And by the way, just so everybody knows, and this has come up, the zoning board and the planning board, as boards, do not have the authority to issue fines. Concom does under its law, Board of Health, I think, does under its law, but the only authority to actually issue a fine and other enforcement actions is John, as the building inspector and zoning enforcement officer. We can recommend that he does some things, and we did once, and we didn't, the fine wasn't issued, but I want everybody to be clear that we're not giving any kind of extraordinary authority to the boards that has been looked at. State law is pretty clear that it's limited to the building inspector, zoning enforcement officer. We're just increasing the amount to comply with state law and be in line with some of our other bylaws of other boards in the town, so. And then the other substantive change, as the judge explained to us, was in the special permit process to make it a clearer and process for us, and that, that special, I mean, the site plan review, excuse me, and that is a process that exclusively within the purview of the planning board.
In A, I just want to mention that Woody Tiddick mentioned something to me, which I think he had a good point. The first sentence of A, which is the existing zoning bylaw, says that no structure may be constructed, altered, or moved without a building permit, and actually, not every structure requires a building permit.
Yeah, like a mobile home.
Well, you know, a mailbox, you don't think you need a building permit, right?
We have, we have a very broad definition of what a structure is--
Structure is, yeah.
--in the bylaw, and it covers more than just buildings.
Yeah.
Yeah, swing set.
Right.
The door open.
Right, right. So we were thinking it wouldn't harm anything to take it out, because the next sentence says, "The building inspector will withhold a building permit if one is applied for, for construction that doesn't comply with the zoning bylaw," and I think that should, should handle what it's supposed to, without requiring a building permit, because that would be unwieldy for most people. I'm sure it's not enforced in that way now, but, does that make a sense? Does that make sense? The building code prevails.
A moment, let the judge finish. Is that, any other things?
No.
All right, anybody on the board have comments about the amendments to Article 12? Yes.
I think Judge Cutler did a great job at going through this earlier, and I don't have any comments. I will say, though, that the revamped variance section, which eliminates the five preconditions of uniqueness that we currently have in our bylaw, and uses the straight language of Mass General Law 40A, Section 10, I think is a vast improvement, which could provide flexibility for future applicants that doesn't currently exist. So I think it's a good move. Site plan clarification, that's, I think it's, it's very useful for the planning office to not have to evaluate every 200-square-foot modification along 3A to have to, to have to get a site plan review. Tom, did you--
Yeah, no, I heard that, I'm sorry, we were, there was something else that came up about-- was something else that came up about whether we postponed this, though. I do want to point out that Woody Chittick, as, as citizen and chair of the zoning board, was at our meeting on Monday, and also had provided us with some written comments about these changes. And he has a particular concern about, it was about the
Special permit.
Well, the fact that we brought back the use variance that had been out of, in our bylaw from 55 to 2002, taken out from 2002 to 2000, whatever it was, '21. It also, that provision had both a use variance and a use special permit process within it. And Woody brought up some points that differ from Judge Cutler's legal opinion on what our authority there is. Basically, the difference is that a special permit has to only, can only be granted for a use that is allowed by special permit in our bylaw under Article 4, under our table of uses. I don't want to speak for Woody, he'll get on me if I state it wrong, but I, I think he was looking at an interpretation from past practice that it was open-ended, that the special permit could be allowed, used to allow any use, not one that's specifically set in bylaw. And Judge Cutler points out that that point of view is directly contrary to state law, and the change that Woody would recommend to this, she would not recommend to us passing. So in deference to the zoning board and to Woody, we are meeting with them on the 21st, we're meeting on the 22nd. We are gonna probably squeeze a bylaw committee on the 20th, I think, because of the next article. We'll talk about that.
Tom, this is general context, it wouldn't affect voting on this now.
Well, that's, that's my, I guess that's my point. Do you want to take a vote on a recommendation now, and then with the possibility that after we talk to the zoning board, we want to rethink it? And, you know, maybe in our first April meeting, we'd have to rethink it.
But if I, whatever call from the other night was, we were gonna have to do a good job at defining real current expected uses.
Yeah.
And describe them generally so that the veterinary clinic problem doesn't happen again.
Right, it's, there's two, again, two issues there is that we have a laundry list in our table of uses that has become, was problematic in the past, because it's so finely defined, some uses and not others, that things that you think are related and allowed weren't, and people had to go jump through a lot of hoops to get permits. We are going to reform the table of uses so it is a simpler document to use. Separate from that, though, is the language of the, the use variance article that was passed, that's now part of Article 4 and is gonna be moved into this article. I think in a nutshell, it says Woody's interpretation is A, the judge's interpretation is B. I don't think we have any choice but to follow the judge's recommendation for legality purposes. And the question for this board is, do you want to vote on this tonight with our own recommendation as it's written? Or do you want to wait, postpone this vote until we heard the ZBA out?
I'd be more comfortable voting if we heard the ZBA out and understood
Even though I think they have a legally indefensible positions, basically. No, no, and I think the judge agrees. The judge made it very clear at our zoning bylaw meeting the other night that she would not in good faith be able to recommend the language that
Right, but this still sounds to me like a unsettled issue.
Not
Less so, less so than the height one, I gotta tell you, I don't, I don't
Let's hear them out, and then we will vote after we hear them out.
Well, we won't hear them. The ZBA is gonna have their own meeting and talk about it, presumably, as a part of their agenda with Tom.
The bylaw committee is meeting with the zoning board to present these, the judge and whoever else in bylaw committee.
But at the very least, it's an opportunity to get a better understanding of the difference, of the opinion.
Okay, well, that's fine. All right, then I'm gonna make a motion that we continue this hearing to March 22.
This part of the hearing?
Well, let me finish the motion. We continue the hearing to March 22. I'm gonna say 7, so that the, let's get 55 South Main out of the way, let's not have the public who wants to hear this waiting around. Obviously, if they're interested in 55 South Main, we'll come, we'll schedule 55 South Main at 6:30, and we will deal with this. So I'm gonna make a motion that we continue this hearing to 7 o'clock, March 22, 2023, to deal with both the amendments, the proposed amendments to Article 12 and 2. And I think we're ready tonight to vote on 2. We're gonna discuss 2 in a moment. I want to hear everybody.
Tom.
Yeah, so that's the motion.
Before you adjourn.
I'm not gonna adjourn.
Oh, okay, okay. Can we discuss 2?
No, we're gonna discuss 2 before
Can we discuss the height thing?
Yeah, we are. I just said that. I just said we're going to discuss it, because I want to hear everybody's opinions on the board on that article, but obviously, we're not gonna vote on it tonight. So I'm making the motion now to just continue our hearing, and we'll continue our deliberations as well, unless I have to do it after our deliberations.
I just don't want you to continue the hearing.
All right, fine, all right, well, that's, that's gonna be the plan, all right? So we will vote on Article 12 and 2 after our meeting on the 22nd. And by the way, just so everybody knows, we may have comments from a third party. We are meeting with advisory next Wednesday, the 15th. Who knows what they'll bring? But the select board last night, we did not get into substance. We will be meeting with the select board at a date to be determined for their recommendations. But right now, it's advisory on the 15th, zoning on the 21st. The bylaw committee may need to meet, I think our scheduled meeting is the 29th, I believe. I think we might have to squeeze something in to deal with the next discussion that we're about to have. All right, so, but if I understand this board correctly, as a consensus, you're okay with Article 12, we just want to hear the ZBA out on. All right, so next would be
Point of clarification?
Yeah.
Go down?
Yeah.
Go down. Under B, it says no structure a lot may be used or occupied, qualified until the building inspector issues an occupancy permit. You have structures that don't require occupancy permits, so do you want to add anything in there that says, or he indicates that it does comply with zoning?
It's a good point. That's the same, that's the same similar thing that you'd have with a
Let me just see.
Yeah.
Well, it may be another point where our current bylaw, so it's the same thing, it is a mess.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, one of the points of our current bylaw was that you read, and I've experienced in reading bylaws, you read 12.1 right now, it's, it's an incomprehensible mess, and
I think we could say rather than an occupancy permit, we could say a statement or, you know, something.
Required.
You know, if required, or, well, but also, I think the idea is that you want, if somebody is going to come in and use, particularly occupying a building, it's more than, than a structure, but could be a structure, you don't want them using it unless the building inspector has signed off on it. So we may have to come up with something other than occupancy permit.
Okay.
Right.
We'll come up with the appropriate
Yeah.
Thank you for pointing that out. Any other comments on the substance of 12 that anybody has, so that we can incorporate them?
Are we gonna continue that?
Yeah, we're gonna continue the vote on it, but right now, you know, Steve's caught
More agenda.
The judge and Steve have caught things in 12.1A and B. Does anybody else have
Yeah, please.
Changes or things that's, let's deal with them now, catch them now. We're deferring our vote till we hear from ZBA. Anyone? Nope? Okay. All right, so now we're gonna move on to the Article 2. And so Article 2, right now, at the moment, is structured to be all dealt with in one article, even though it has two parts to it. It has some very innocuous changes in definitions, and then it has the changes in definition to height and the related new definitions that would come with it. Point one I would bring up is, do we do the same thing we're doing with Article 8 and make it a two-part vote process? The innocuous, if the definition of height change, if it goes forward, is defeated, it defeats the other innocuous changes, should we separate them into two votes? I would suggest if we're going forward with it, we do that. The second thing is, you know, we'll discuss this on what any objections are to the changes, and there has been suggestion within the bylaw committee of moving the height definition change to when we deal with the dimensional table, to the extent we may address the 35-foot limit and changing it in different parts of town. So that's one thought, that's another course of action we can have here. But first, let's just see what the board has to say about the height proposal as it is at the moment. And I'll just say that when the bylaw committee dealt with this, the idea of the measurement from the bottom, the measure, the points around the foundation, which I think by consensus we would amend to just 12 equidistant points, was accepted 5 to, oh, 5-0 in the bylaw. It is the definition of what the top point is, and the change to the slope roof, that was 3 to 2 in favor. Rough straw poll last night was 311 in favor of going forward with it, but very rough straw poll, but. So Clark, I know your position, and I know you're gonna want to take
It was forward.
Corey was kind of on the fence, he was gonna wait it out.
Are you gonna let me
Yeah, no, I know, I
Talk about it?
No, I know, you are, and I know you're gonna have a lot to say about it, so let me first hear, if you don't mind, from the other board members first, and then we'll get, I'm gonna give you your shot, believe me.
Tom, could I just, what I want, just as deference to the select board, one of the, we have straw polling, reason we have straw poll, is because we really want to hear what planning thought and advisory thought, so I'm, one of the reasons I'm, well, I'm here because I'm on the committee. But to hear what your thoughts are on that, because the select board is really kind of listening very carefully to the planning board, so.
Yeah, the select board made no recommendations on any of the articles. I just took a strict straw poll, basically on the issue, do we proceed with the height change definition, or do we put it off to the fall? And that was, you know, a rough straw poll on that. All right. Clark will have the floor. I just want to see if anybody else who has not been participating this at the level with the ZB, the bylaw committee, has anybody else got a comment on
Point of order. I would like to have you hold each member of the planning board five minutes, because we've already heard a significant amount of information. We've talked about the subject for a couple of years, and so it would make people cut to the chase, we can get the differences out on the table.
Anybody have a problem with that?
Yeah, I think people should take whatever time is reasonable. Some people might take 15 seconds, and some people might need six minutes. I know on the floor of town meeting a year and a half ago, I asked the moderator for more than my five minutes, and he said no. And I thought it was a little unreasonable, given the amount of content that I had for discussion on the floor of town meeting.
All right, Clark, this is what I'm gonna do. It is 9:17?
No, no, here's what you're trying to do, you're trying to box me in, I get it.
I'm not trying to box you in at all, Clark.
I get it, no.
I'm not trying to box you in at all. I'm leaving you to the end, because I know your comments are gonna be extensive and go beyond five minutes to give you that time.
I don't, they may not.
But it's 9:17, and, you know, we traditionally don't like to go this long, but that's fine.
Well, why don't we punt this one, if you're expecting a big problem, why don't we punt this to the 22nd of March?
I'd like, for the benefit
Let everybody make a half
For the benefit of the judge and the bylaw committee, I would at least like to hear initial reactions of the rest of the planning board, or the whole planning board, on it, so that for the 22nd, the bylaw committee can come forward with a revised proposal, or a game plan to put this off until the fall. So I'd like to use this time, because we don't get to discuss it at our own meetings, and I'd like to use this opportunity. So you'll get your chance to speak, I would just, because I've heard your, and we all have, I want to hear from the people we haven't heard from first, if I may. Anything on the height definition, on any part of it, but we, I seem to think we're focused on the
I wanna focus on measurement.
Yep.
I think that we learned a very important lesson on 580, which was that we actually did not have a consistent practice for the measurement of the situation of a structure on a, on a piece of property, and also the height of the building. Post, had we actually used a piece of software to measure the house on 580, it would have come out as larger than what was specified in the discussions that took place. I think we need to have more science applied to this, and I think we should listen to Mike Sardina, who has spent his entire career working on landscapes, not just buildings, but landscapes, because this is the one issue which I actually really appreciated your comment about, it's not just that you're losing a vista, you're also getting overshadowed, and your, your entire living experience, when you have a structure all of a sudden that is unnaturally large compared to the structures around it, your, your life has changed. And so I think we, it's, we owe it to the town to make a scientific decision that, that is the best that we can come up.
And then with respect to Mike Sardina's comments, I think as we were discussing it at the time, we were coming to a consensus to measure at the foundation, the point of the actual proposed foundation.
It would have to be right at the
All right, that's fine.
Not a feet's away, and, you know, because
I'm not hearing, I'm not hearing him
I live on a street in which, you know, somebody's got a six-foot truck, and they, you know, they've got a house that's got six foot
Fair enough.
Feet.
And I, I, I believe
Yeah, but I
Somebody can tell me if I'm wrong, we have a consensus on that
We can have science, we need science.
Okay. And prior to the meeting, you talked about the discussion of LIDAR and
It's the easiest
No, no, whatever it is, no, whatever it is, is that my suggestion to you, and I'll say this now, is that the actual scientific methodology we might choose to impose on a developer, on an applicant, and there will be a difference between developers and homeowners who are just doing an addition or something small, is done, best done through a regulation, you know, we have to, the judge mentioned it earlier, we have to upgrade our site plan, you know, what are our filing requirements? So what are file, what filing requirements we, we ask of people are going to change over time as best practices change, we're getting away from paper, we're going to computer, everything being filed online. I think we should talk about that in a regulation, that's where it would belong, and only with the caution that what scientific tools we require of people has to be reasonable in light of the fact that we deal with a whole different range of applicants with different economic resources available.
The engineering firms that we deal with already use the technology.
That's one thing, that's one thing, yes, and I understand it, but I think the point is well-taken, because not only, I think what John's asking about uniformity, if everybody's on the same page of not only what we're measuring, but how we're measuring it, that would probably be a good thing. But methodologies are gonna change over time as best practices change, as technologies
So I appreciate what you're saying. So what I'm saying is, we want to use the best technology that exists now.
Okay.
And, and recognizing that technology does change there, I mean, the companies have been using the technology that we should use for a while.
Right.
So that's just, you want to renew my opinion?
No, no, I do, and I think, I just think that's hard to put in a bylaw, but I, the point is well-taken, because we do need to, again, the goal is to get everybody on the same page, and that we're getting a consistent methodology in measuring height, and so we have, I'm making a note of it, and I, we will, we'll address on the bylaw committee how we address that going forward. Anybody else? I'm not, I'm gonna go in no particular order. Chris?
So I support the change in the measurement, particularly the 12 equidistant points at the foundation. I think we all agree that will result in more accurate measurements. I also support, we're on the height issue, right? Comment on that? I support the change in the height definition. I understand the argument that by changing the height definition, you create an incentive for everything to have a square roof. I would argue that incentive exists today, absent the change in the height definition, and we're not in a town of explicitly square roofs. And my last comment is, hey, I love that you brought up the potential for a five-minute limit on board comments. I think that's a great idea, not just for tonight, but for all board meetings, because it expressly encourages people to get to the point and then listen to other board members, and it is explicitly respectful of the board and the public's time.
I can be long one, too. I understand. Deandra, Kevin, down the R end.
So I'll speak. I think clarification of the height definition is warranted, and I think with regard to the technology, the technology could be I think with regard to the technology, the technology could be string of tape. You know, an inch is what an inch is, a foot is what a foot is, meters are what they are. I think to the point about using current technology, current technology that can be applied not just by the developers, but by a homeowner, by the town to get to an accurate amount, an accurate measure. That's what we're talking about here. We want accurate measures. And there's technology out there now to get them, readily get them, whether you're a homeowner, you can get it for short change based on something that you can buy at the hardware store, use your laser sighting technology, or getting a professional out there to do it with something that incorporates LiDAR or remote sensing technology for large areas. It exists. I don't necessarily think we need to specify it, but I think we do need to point out that they need to be generally accepted and accurate measurements that are provided, and that's what's presented to the board and that we use. I do have some concern about the discussion we had earlier about this 10-foot radius of taking these measurements. I could see where something like that could come into play if measurements were taken when a foundation has been poured and there's still a space on the exterior of the foundation that goes out so that that foundation can cure for a longer period of time. And sometimes that happens during construction, that's done during different seasons. So if that's the case, it's hard to drop a plum down the side of it to the edge of the foundation when the edge of the foundation has been excavated out several feet to expose the base of the foundation, the footers and that type of thing. So I'm not sure the origin of that, but I could see where that could potentially be the issue or why some of the regulations or way it's written now allows for that.
My understanding, like if we're dealing with something with a new foundation, they'd be coming to us with their application before they start to pour that foundation. And so they're making the measurements on tape.
You know, we've seen a lot of things in this town where they're supposed to, should have, could have, and we end up with what we have now, whether it's on the street I live on or other places in town where there's, we don't know how they got it back through. So we need to anticipate ways people are going to get these measurements, when, so that we get to accurate measurements. And just-
Okay, and again-
I don't know why someone would take a measurement. If this table right here was a building, we measured on the edge of that table to the floor, we would measure it right there on the edge of the table. Why would we need to measure 10 feet out? I don't know.
Okay, well, again, as I mentioned before, though, that is, for whatever reason, been part of our bylaw forever. That 10 feet away from the foundation is in the current definition. And it's been pointed out tonight by Mike Sardina and now you that it makes no sense. Again, it comes down to, John, you're the professional here, you know, what? Is measuring at the foundation make sense and can it be easily done?
Well, I think it confused the term between as-built. I think the average grade they're looking for, so it's not actually pinpoint right there, so they allow overdig or other things. So that's where they usually go out from the foundation, a certain number of feet, not measured at the foundation. The as-built, after it's completed, is measured from where the foundation, the average grade, up to the peak. So the backfilling stuff really isn't always considered in that, so we don't really need that.
No, the definition would be the lower of the pre and the post, so the backfilling would not-
The average grade there before that, so that would get you that. So I think we're getting hung up with the average grade as opposed to, you know, the exact grade at different points. Again, the average is to give you, you know, the approximate grade around the whole surface to account for the different, you know, some lots are very flat, to account for the different scales. But the average grade and those different points would kind of give you a summation of that.
Well, that's our reality in this town. I mean, the average on one side of a house, if you just use that side and another side, is going to be different than if you use the whole perimeter based on the slopes that we have on these lots, especially the ones that are coming in front of our board now. These are the lots that were difficult to develop for the last several decades. Because now with plastic technology or whatever you're using to flatten them, or the goal is to get to a uniform grade, it's easier to do now and cheaper to do. So now these lots that are in front of us are the ones that have these substantial grades and slopes to them, and we need to have something in here that allows that average to be an accurate representation of what's going to be around that house. Because it's going to look different from someone on the side that's on the up slope versus someone that's going to be on the down slope. And so we have to recognize that, and I just want to make sure that that is done in what we have in front of us here in Leeuwa.
Okay, thank you. Justin tells me there's somebody, is it about this height issue that we're talking about?
It's Mike Sardina. He's got his hand up.
Okay, Mike, go ahead.
Come on.
Get him up.
Mike, the floor's yours.
Yeah, just a quick comment regarding this relative to the existing grades. It should also be done on a one-foot contour interval. You don't want two-foot intervals, you don't want one-meter intervals. One-foot intervals, they should be utilizing relative to any plans that come before the planning board with a footprint on it, so that basically the existing grades at 12 equal spaces all the way around can be noted on a plan and you can determine the height, the average height based on that. And then that sets the whole thing starting relative to the building height. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
I'll put intervals, one-foot intervals.
Yeah, I made a note of that.
One-foot contour.
Yeah, one-foot. Is there something you wanted to add?
I just want to make a quick comment for the board. The ones that you're going to see are only going to be the ones that come for large home reviews. Other than that, it's all going to be on John. So you may see it now because the large homes are coming in, but the only thing I can see about this at all is, and I don't know if there's a way to do this in the bylaw or not, if somebody's coming in with just a two-story house, are they going to be held to the same engineering standards if it's obvious that they are way below what is the 35-foot? I don't know if there's a way to put that in there or not.
I guess, John, I mean, anytime somebody's building something new, whether it's one-story, two-story, or three, they have to have plans that, as just a matter of course, would put dimensions and height dimensions. And I think if John sees something that's 25 feet high, he probably wouldn't even bring it to our attention. And to the extent our board or the zoning board has to issue a permit, we see that. It's not going to raise any red flags. But I imagine putting the height on is just standard operating procedure of any site plan or any architectural plan.
Yeah, it's just, we're making it to an extent now where it's going to be a surveyor who's going to go out and determine all these points. And again, I'm just saying, if somebody's-
Yeah, but it's only an issue for us for the ones that are pushing the limit. And that's where it gets us involved, obviously.
Yeah, but just to follow up on Steve's comment. Oftentimes, if it's not close or if it's clear, in my estimation, that it's well below any height restrictions then we don't require that further set information.
Great.
If it's a ranch, for example, or a cape, that we know that it's just not going to come close to the height. Same thing, sometimes it's put on a small addition with the setback requirements. If they're able to prove, you know, that we're well in the distance of the side of a rear setback, so it's really not an issue. As it gets closer, then we require that information. So that's pretty common, so we try to kind of give that leeway.
We're not throwing common sense out the window.
Yeah, I just want the board to understand, probably not going to see all of them.
Right, no. Anything, Deirdre, anything else? All right, Clark, the floor is yours.
I really think this particular warrant article should be tabled and incorporated into the major review of the zoning bylaw. The things that make a difference to the future of Cohasset and have an effect on homeowners' rights. Whenever we change zoning, we take value from, or create value or take value away, whenever there's a zoning change. And the extent to which this five-foot height difference may not seem like much would affect projects in the village or how it affects houses. I mean, I don't think that the grade clarification is really problematic or makes any difference to what we have now. 95% of all lots are sort of evenly sloped or flat. It's just a few, and one example that I did the analysis for Amy because she said, I think, I think there's a problem with this height of this house at 580 Jerusalem Road. And I did the analysis and figured out what was wrong. But I think this change limits garage heights to one story instead of a story and a half. It limits, it will limit projects in the village to two stories instead of three. And, you know, it basically cuts attic space in half. I think it takes something away from the value that people could create in their own homes, their own buildings throughout town. And those are the main reasons why I don't like it. Now, architects and designers, we can figure out ways to work around restrictions. There's sort of an even distribution of towns that have height that goes to the peak instead of the midpoint of the rafter around us. This definition doesn't address the floodplain issue that has been brought up. But again, I would table it with the more complex zoning changes that affect people's property values in just under three minutes. Let's stop watch.
I wasn't going to limit you to five. I wasn't going to limit you strictly.
Two minutes, 59 seconds.
I appreciate it, but I wasn't going to limit you to five minutes.
And I wouldn't say that we've seen America.
Alex, can you keep me under five minutes? That's the struggle. No, but I just want to say again, we need to make distinctions between the number of 35 feet and how we measure it, which is what this is attempting to do. I asked for some clarification about the village, you know. Many people on 143 have complained that One Pleasant Street is too high. Well, One Pleasant Street, John's given me data, it's 33 and something to the midpoint, it's 3710.
3710 and a half.
Yeah, 10 and a half. So it's one foot, 10 and a half inches higher than this change would allow. But that is a three-story structure at the moment. It is a three-story structure. It is a big structure. And again, I keep making the point that it depends how you measure a story. And as David pointed out, towns are used, other towns are using story or height, whichever is lower or whichever is least. And maybe we go to that at some point when we get to the table. You know, the floodplain, the harbor, we've talked about the height in the harbor. And, you know, we didn't limit it with the overlay district. It's been talked about for two years in the bylaw working group in this committee to do something about that. And again, as of yesterday, people have brought up that it's going to limit affordable multifamily housing development. Well, to the extent that's going to go near the MBTA station on 3A, maybe it's appropriate for 3A that we have a higher than 35-foot limit. But right now, the town has had four years, a 35-foot height limit. And our definition as it applies to a peaked roof is a loophole that potentially allows for a 40-foot-high structure. And my reading of, and by the way, again, Katie Dugan had pointed this out at the forum last week, and I got the charts, I left them at my office. But she, you know, the bylaw working group, and she had analyzed large home applications. There aren't actually that many that are pushing the limit. But there is a trend to that direction, and we had a project that's been mentioned earlier tonight that certainly pushed that limit. And 55 South Main is pushing that limit. It has a very unique geography to deal with because the brick is under it, so it's understandable. But again, you know, the other places in the village, One Pleasant is doing a tasteful three-story building within our limits and could still do so if it lost a foot, 10 and a half inches. My point is, we have this loophole, and I think at the large home review hearings that I've been hearing, and then I'm reading comments on 143 about the village, I don't think there's any case in this town for allowing 40-foot structures, certainly in our residential districts. And there's a very strong opinion not to let them in the village either. And this is a loophole. And the things that Kevin mentioned, we are facing a different development world where people are building bigger, they are pushing the limits. The prices and the values are just too great to avoid the temptation to do that. And it's a loophole that should be closed. It's been open for far too long. We haven't been burned by it, but the potential is there, and that's what this is doing. And then come fall, if we think 35 feet is not the right number for the village or 3A or the harbor or even the residential districts, we deal with that at that time. That's what the point of this is. So that's all I'll say about it. I've repeated it in many forums. We'll put this off. I appreciate that everybody has made comments so that Judge Cutler and the bylaw committee can incorporate some of these things. We've agreed on some changes that Mike and Steve and others have put forward tonight. You know, and we'll hear out what the advisory committee has to say on it and the zoning board. And we'll be back on the 22nd to deal with it. I encourage everyone on this committee and on the bylaw committee to come to these other meetings and make your case about it. No problem. But I don't know if anybody else has anything else they want to add on it, Judge Cutler, you too?
I have a big motion to continue the definitions article.
Anything else you want to add about the height issue?
The only thing I wanted to add about the height is, if people are concerned that by measuring the height of a sloped roof at the very top would be a thing that would defeat the changes to the definition and how you measure, the way to deal with that is to continue to measure it as we currently do. So right now, we measure it to the midline on a sloped roof. Leave it that way. But then, when you're dealing with height, you can have a more nuanced approach to the various districts and the heights, the varying heights in different districts, as Tom had mentioned. And you can do it then as part of that, rather than throwing out this whole refinement of the height definition itself and how you measure it. And, you know, there's going to be a lot coming up at the fall town meeting. It would be a shame if we couldn't get rid of some of the simpler items going forward. But that's just, that's just if people are inclined to just not move the article at all or not put the article on before, on the warrant. I would just suggest that there's another way to address this.
You know, and following on that, what's interesting about this is that, starting with the working group two years ago, other than the harbor, there has been no sentiment, no expression of interest in addressing the 35-foot limit. And this discussion has now opened up, and what the judge is saying, maybe we go through the whole town. RA shouldn't be as tall as a building we allow in RC. 3A may be different than what we allow in the village and certainly what we allow in residential areas. So it's actually opened up a conversation and an issue that hadn't even been discussed in two years of our work because, you know, again, we were saying, keep the 35 feet, just change with how you measure that 35 feet. But that's an interesting discussion going forward, and I look forward to that for the fall because I think we've opened up a lot of issues to think about. So, you know.
I've tried not to chuckle, Tom.
You know, and by the way, 35 feet, for everybody knows, you know, the working group did study this. It's maybe the high end of the range, typical is 30 to 35, some, a lot of towns are 32. So, you know, we're not crazy out of whack with 35 feet. But, you know, I'm hearing perhaps a total reevaluation of 35 feet, at least in its uniform.
I want to go into.
Well, you're going to have a busy summer schedule. Don't plan a vacation.
Which, uh-
All right, so there's been a motion on the floor to continue this hearing. I would say to March 22 at 7, just so you don't have people come too early and have to be bogged down by listening to another hearing. We will discuss at that time our recommendation on a vote on the article to amend Article 12 and the article to amend Article 2. So, in that motion, second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Clark, you're aye. Tom Callahan, aye?
Amy Glassmore, aye.
Amy Glassmore, aye.
All right, thank you all. Do we have anybody else got any?
I should have lost most of our audience.
Okay, good. All right, motion is adjourned. Second, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you.